As a preliminary matter, this is Walter Byron, Chair of the Norfolk Planning Board. I see all members are present, so and we have with us also our staff, Rich McCarthy, the Town Planner, and Betsy Bijoal, the Administrative Assistant. So, good evening. This open meeting of the Norfolk Planning Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the Governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible, physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order which you can find posted with the agenda materials for this meeting allows public bodies to be entirely remotely, so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will be, will feature, rather, public comment. For this meeting, the Planning Board is convening, as posted on the town's website via the Zoom Please note that the meeting is being recorded, and some attendees are participating by video conference. Be aware that other folks may be able to see you, and that take care not to screen-share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Finally, each vote taken this evening will be conducted by roll-call vote. So with that preliminary introduction, let me welcome you all to tonight's meeting, and our first order of business is to hear from GFI Partners. Rich, you may wish to set the table for them.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we're going to hear a concept development proposal for the Southwood Hospital property on Route 1A Norfolk-Denham Street. The presentation will be presented by a team from GFI Partners. A couple weeks ago, they had reached out to the town that they had the property under agreement and were looking to go the next steps in the due diligence process to see if potentially they could move on to purchase the property and develop the property. Well, what I'll do is I'll screen-share the concept plan, and then they can talk to it. As I want to mention, that it is a concept plan. There are many pieces to this, as far as if it were to become a reality. There's, for one, zoning doesn't allow warehouse in the C-6 district, which is essentially the zoning district where the Southwood Hospital property lies. Second component of it that you'll see is a concept for a 40B project. At the outset, remind everybody that, you know, the town of Norfolk is under safe harbor right now until September of 2022. So in order to move forward with a 40B project, it needs to be something that is a friendly in nature and is accepted by the town, because we are presently in, under safe harbor. With that, I will segue, turn over to Attorney Cannon, and then he can then go to whoever needs to speak next.
Great. Thanks very much, Rich. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of board, Edward Cannon, on behalf of GFI Partners, helping them through this process. And as Rich mentioned, this is a very preliminary process. These are sort of concept ideas that GFI would like to sort of share with the town and really hope to get some feedback, because they really would like to work collaboratively with the town on something that would work for, well, I hope, for the town and also for GFI. And so although some ideas are thrown out in terms of 40B project, they would only really proceed if it's a so-called friendly 40B, that's something that would work both for them and for the town. So kind of exploring options. I'm joined tonight by Steve Goodman and Haley Marsh from GFI, as well as Brian Poitras from GFI, Bob LaRochelle from Andover Strategics is their permanent consultant, Doug Hartnett and Chris McCarthy from High Point Engineering, and then Bob Cronin is the listing agent for the property has joined in tonight as well. So with that backdrop, Rich, I don't know if it's possible, but if Doug Hartnett could share his screen, he basically took the concept plan that was kind of messy that we shared with you the other day and has cleaned it up a little bit, and if he could share that, it might make it a little bit easier to follow along.
Sure. I'll make Doug co-host.
Terrific. Ted, let me know if you want me to begin or if there's any other comments that the GFI team wants to make before we get going.
No, I think that would be great, Doug, if you could maybe introduce the board to the site and sort of take them right through the concept. That'd be terrific.
Okay, so as Attorney Cannon said, Doug Hartnett with High Point Engineering. I have three slides. They're very minimal in nature, if you will. I just wanted to give the board a little context. I'm sure everybody knows where the Southwood Hospital site is, but just wanted to reorient people as to where we are. Obviously, this is Route 115 and 1A down in this location, a hospital site, as you see in here. This is MCI Cedar Junction, the wall pole Norfolk Town Line, as you see here, and then in yellow is the site limits. Site is about 86 acres. It's completely abandoned at this point. It's just, you can't get in there other than through lock gates and so forth. Since we met with Rich informally and some of the members of the board, we went back out to the site to get a little better orientation of the site conditions, because we're still getting our hands around really the site constraints as they relate to a development plan that can work out here. And I apologize for how washed out this is, but you'll see later on how this relates to the development plan. So your orientation is the wall pole Norfolk Town Line is on the left side of the page here. This is the hospital site. So everybody relates to the site access as you come off Denham Street here. And on the right hand of the site, this is all a mix of boring vegetated wetlands, intermittent streams. There's a lot of kind of debris and so forth in this part of the site that has been dumping over the years. There's an old landfill in this location here that was with respect to the operations of the hospital. There's some old sewer beds out in the back here that are no longer operational. They provided sewage treatment and disposal for the hospital as well. And then off the page you see here, this is the old railroad right away that extended through the site, both through Norfolk and Wall Pole, and comes up to Hill Road and crosses Hill Road. That's been abandoned and sold and fee to the, it was to Southwood Hospital. I point that out because that has some implications on the development plan. So this plan is a variation of what we had shared with Rich last week. So in terms of what the site constraints are, as we said, the site has pretty significant topography. If you've been out there and walked around, you know, the hospital site itself is somewhat flat. You can see it in grayscale in the background, but as you go to the north of the site, there's some pretty significant grade changes. You go to the left of the north of the site. And then also, as you get away from the hospital development proper, you can see in blue the stream channels that extend through the site, running basically north-south. We have other stream channels in this area here, and the landfill, as we said, in this location here. So when we originally were doing some due diligence planning out here, we were looking at an industrial development, some sizable footprint due to the demand for e-commerce facilities within the region, and understanding the industrial nature of the site currently today as a hospital, given its proximity to the, really, the outskirts and the edges of Norfolk and Wall Pole, but also given some of the other ancillary uses in the area with Cedar Junction and so forth. So this plan represents a 600,000-square-foot footprint industrial warehouse facility. The dimensions are about 500 feet deep by 1,200 feet long. This parking parks at about 1 per 1,000 square foot. We see that oftentimes in a lot of the planning and some other regional communities, Franklin being one of them, for about a 1 per 1,000 parking ratio. So the parking represents that in this area on the, beyond the east and the south end of the building. Also required for facilities of this type are trailer storage. And so we've created trailer storage to the north and then also to the west here. That trailer storage is integrated with a truck court. In this case, for this plan, we would have a truck court, one-sided dock area that could be a development alternative for a second tray of loading on the south side of the building, given the deep dimension of 500 feet. Sometimes we want to try to create a second dock location to get some better efficiency in the building operation. Access for this building would be from two points, and that's driven somewhat by the topography. As you come down Denham Street, you're higher in elevation as you're to the north of the site, and you drop down in elevation as you come to the south. So we have a shorter driveway segment to get to a building pad site in this area here. This would be for trucking, but also primarily for employees and so forth. And then this route would be a second, really a dedicated truck access to get to the truck court, and it's longer and circuitous because we're lower in elevation at the curb cut. And in order to be able to gain enough distance for a reasonable road slope to come into the truck court, that's what gives you the sense of the alignment of that driveway. We've also tried to have the driveway not extend too far outside the limits of the previously developed area. For obvious reasons, there's still some unknowns regarding the wetland areas and the streams that extend to be part of the site. We elected not to disturb the landfill area in here, again, for obvious reasons. We need to understand the limitations of the landfill, any kind of environmental regulatory regulations, if you will, that dictate what you can do within the landfill. So we kept that outside of the development footprint. It came to our attention at the last meeting that in prior development proposals, the town had really, I don't want to say earmarked, but thought that this site was a good candidate for potential affordable housing in order to be able to bolster the town's stock. We understand the town is under 10%, at least from my last review of the affordable housing inventory published by the state. But, and I'll zoom into here to give some better context as to some of the constraints that we wrestle with here. So as you come down to this area, what we're going to find is doing any residential development of reasonable density will require some strategic placement of buildings. Really, it's going to be a three-story, flat style. That's what the proposal is in here, 18, an 18-unit per level, a 54-unit total building. And we've really marched them up as you come up gradient from the street to the back of the site. Again, this is the low part of the site, and this is the high part of the site. We found through some of our due diligence, you can see in red are the bordering vegetated wetland areas that were delineated from prior studies in 2010. So we presume that those are reasonably accurate today, and we have some relative confidence that this footprint is available for residential development in the front. The issue with the rear of the property is the fact that we have a significant ravine associated with this stream channel, this intermittent stream that runs through the site right here. We went to the site, we looked at that, that channel, and in fact, it is a ravine. If I had to take a guess, the ravine depth is in the order of 30 feet as you come across here. So trying to establish a reasonable access driveway to connect the residential areas on the west to the east across this ravine, first of all, I think, might have some objections from the Conservation Commission, you know, to be determined, but just from a constructability perspective, in order to be able to do a crossing of that magnitude would require some structural elements for the road crossing, whether it's a small bridge or some significant filling that would occur. So what we did is we took a look at the Hill Road, the old rail crossing at Hill Road. It's a little bit off the page, but it appears that when you go to Hill Road, the old granite abutments still remain in that area. And it appears that that area was actually raised in grade by the railroad when they first built the rail bed. And so it appears that we can perhaps eliminate the abutment that's there today. It has no physical use or anything, and create a separate access down the old rail bed and gain access to the rear of the site for two additional potential residential building pads and avoid any potential crossing of this large ravine here. The buildings are somewhat linear in this area because of the drop in the topography. Again, we have steep topography that drops down, so this is kind of a terrace-type of design thinking, if you will. Parking, building, perhaps podium level or podium parking underneath a half-level of the building in this location to the west side of it, and then similarly here to take advantage of the site grades that cut across these two building sites. As you get to this area of the property, the topography is a little less daunting in order to be able to provide residential programming in that area. But again, this all requires some really dialed-in and minutia, if you will, minutia-level studies, wetland delineations and mapping, additional topography and so forth, in order to be able to establish the viability of the residential, first the programming, and then also the density and the access in that area. So under this proposal, the residential, we established 216 units, 54 per building, parking at about a 2-per-unit ratio that could go down depending on ultimately what might, the market might demand or what the zoning might require, but we're providing about two parking spaces per unit for these residential buildings. So in summary, what we feel we could do under this development plan is isolate the industrial development to the north from the residential development in the south, create some buffering between the two different uses, whether that's through grading or planting or some other programmatic element. We'll be able to isolate and protect the residential to some degree from the commercial because we have opportunities with topography, with existing mature wooded areas. We have the demarcation of the two sites with the intermittent stream, and so it really does set itself up for kind of a two-dedicated development site play. I think that's probably it for my presentation, unless some of our other team members wanted to provide some additional comment. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd say if no one else on the team has any comments, then Mr. Chairman would be happy to sort of field any questions that the board may have. Again, very preliminary, and so questions are welcome.
Well, Ted, one, just one thought, two thoughts, actually. One, you look at the residential building that's further to the east, which would be the one at the top of the page. My recollection is that happens to be sitting on the best soil on the whole site for a potential wastewater treatment facility, which you're going to need for the residential properties. You might want to just look into that. The second question has to do with, have you thought about traffic routes? Obviously, there's a great volume of trucks and probably vans, but sticking with the trucks for a moment, have you thought about traffic routes to get trucks in and out of this facility? Well, to your point, Mr. Chairman, as I had said before, this would be the primary trucking route to get into the facility from this curb cut here. No, I'm talking about how do you get from this site to the major roads where the trucks are going to originate from? Oh, I see. So if we were to go to this locus plan here, Route 115 is at this crossroads to south of the project site. This is Route 1. This is Patriots Place. So we have the opportunity to, whether it's 115 or run further south down toward Retham Center, that may not be ideal, or continue up through Wall Pole, and if Route 1 becomes the major route for truck traffic, which it is, you know, if anybody's driven on Route 1, there's a fair amount of industrial traffic that travels that corridor, and then we could look at to go through Wall Pole. But we have not actually explored primary trucking routes out of this facility, Mr. Chairman, so point well taken.
Well, the question on the operations, first of all, is there a tenant lined up for this project?
Doug, want me to take that?
Yes, if you could, Steve. Thank you.
Hi, Steve Goodman with GFI, and the answer is no. Don't have a tenant lined up. It's too premature in the process, but we are very confident that this site and a building as Doug has drawn would be of interest to several of the requirements that are in the market right now.
That being said, there's two different types of warehouse from my perspective. There's one that takes bulk goods and brings it to other distribution centers, and they distribute it there to end users. And there's also what, you know, they call the last mile warehouse, where the people storing in this warehouse will go to end users, which means that there'll be vans going through the neighborhoods as compared to just going out to the highways. So that's kind of a big difference of the operations when you come to a town like Norfolk, which has many of the roads, country roads, that are 18 feet wide, that have site distance issues. And as you know, the vans for these companies are not allowed to pull in driveways, so you're actually forced to put on, park on the shoulder, which has been a problem in some of the budding towns that have these type of businesses.
I totally agree with you and understand the question. The answer is that you're right, there are, you know, as we speak, the evolution of warehousing and distribution is moving at an incredible pace. And so I would, you know, I think that if we really got down to it, there's probably six or seven types of warehouses that if you're talking about, you know, an Amazon or a Walmart, you know, they're really, you know, kind of separating these different aspects of their delivery and their distribution and getting, you know, it's becoming, you know, a science. You know, Norfolk proximity to Route 1 and its proximity to, you know, 95 and 495 are what make this interesting to the, you know, the big retailers looking for a home for, you know, I would call it for more bulk-type distribution. But until we, until we know, you know, we really can't, it would certainly what, you know, who's really interested. I would tell you that the last mile units are trying to get closer to population, and they're looking, they're starting to look much smaller, more like 120,000 square feet versus 600,000 square feet. I think, you know, what we're seeing, you know, in these last mile facilities now is maybe an area as big as this, but with a much smaller building and, you know, tremendous amount of parking in their delivery vehicles and their, and their work. We're at the preliminary stage here. We think this is what the market wants, you know, in Norfolk, a big, more bulk distribution, more type of traditional, although it's hard to say traditional now because it's moving so fast, but we would, you know, we think that this would look like, like Doug said, you know, this, as Doug drew, is a single-loaded facility. It might look like a, you know, a dual-loaded facility with some doors on the backside, but more traditional bulk warehouse, you know, to get good into the region, and then from here to the last mile facilities, which would be closer to the population center. But once again, sir, you know, we're really here to show you concept, to see if the town has an appetite for this type of development, and we would be, you know, working with the town, you know, throughout this process to, you know, make sure that traffic routes work and, you know, the use ultimately, ultimately works. You know, nothing on this, on this drawing is, you know, by right right now, so this is.
I think that my point was, Holly, before you take something to town meeting, where the two different types of warehouses are dramatically different as far as traffic flow, and if they're going to be distributing to three or four or seven of budding towns, and I'm assuming this is a 24-hour operation, and you've got the noise from the tractors coming out and the vans packing on the, on the shoulders on narrow roads, I think if you probably are going to have success at town meeting, in my view, you're probably going to have to figure out what type of an operation this is going to be, because, like I said, going to 95 or 128 or 495 with trailers, bringing it to other district locations for individual deliveries to end users is one thing, and having this being delivered to individual end users from here is a substantially different business plan.
Totally agree. Totally agree. And I think that the logistics involved with a, you know, a van delivery project are, we're going to need to do extensive traffic studies regardless to show the town where, you know, where trucks are going to come and go from. But I do believe that, or we believe that this is, this location and what we're, what we envision and what we're, you know, expecting to build is your traditional distribution warehouse, not your van, last mile van delivery facility.
So if you came to the planning board with a plan, and it's going to be more than likely a distribution center for bulk loading to, through the highways, you would have no problem with the planning board restricting the permit to limit the traffic flows and the types, et cetera.
Yeah, I think that's part of what we would expect, a part of the conversation is, you know, what are the traffic patterns? Where are these trucks allowed to come from and to leave to, and, you know, and how is that going to work? I would say that, you know, these, you know, these are, you know, 24-hour facilities in the sense that they're open, they're open off-hours, you know, for, you know, deliveries and for loading of vehicles to leave. Most of these bulk warehouses, they want to get their trucks, you know, on the road before traffic and, you know, and off the road during heavy traffic, so, you know, but that's all part of the process, sir. We would, you know, we would have to show, we would expect to show the town and agree with the town on, you know, how this truck traffic is going to come and go out of the site and how we're going to minimize impact on residential neighborhoods. That's, that's expected and fair, you know. Our, you know, these, you know, these neighborhoods, they want to be on the highway.
Thank you.
Other board members have questions?
Yeah, this is Chad Peck. What kind of timeframe are you looking for to come?
So we're, so we're in the, this is a, you know, kind of a temperature kind of conversation with the town, but if, if the town is, you know... Encouraging, you know, the, this project. Gets closed before the end of the year, I think, or whatever. It's very quickly, we would take title to this. And then this process, we have to go. We've got to go through the whole zoning process with the town. So, you know, I think we would hope to be. On the town warrants for your next town meeting. And then, once we had that, then we'd have to start the whole process with the planning board. So I.
The next town meeting is, would be in May, I think.
Yeah. So let's just pretend for now that everybody loves this project. As it, you know, we, we, we go and we, we get the town excited about it and we get a good town, we get a good town. We get a vote at the town meeting for the zone change. And then we would be in front of the planning board, going, starting the process, which I would imagine would be, take us through all of next year. And we would be looking to, you know, start construction sometime in twenty-two. I don't see how it could happen faster. There's a lot of wood to chop here, you know, we've got a. A lot of work here and even a friendly forty R. Is a, is a long process that, you know, that takes time with the state and the town. So I think that it looks like sometime, we spend the next twelve months or so, you know. The, you know. Working together to come up with the, you know, the ultimate plan, get a town, go through the town vote process and then. Go through the planning process. And hopefully sometime in twenty-two, we're starting, you know, to. Build this. We've got a whole bunch of demolition and environmental remediation in the existing, you know, one of the things that's. That, you know, I, I think one of the good things that comes out of this is that there's this old, you know, hospital facility and some environmental issues. That we're going to have to take care of as part of this process. So. There's demolition, there's asbestos abatement, and there's some, you know, some oil and some others. Groundwater or, you know, soil issues that have to be.
Remediated, yeah.
Remediated, yes. Thank you for that word. Remediated during this process.
Do you intend to remove the hazardous waste or cap it?
We, I, I, I think that it's going to be a little bit of both, you know, where we can, where it makes sense to, to cap it. We'll do that. Where our LSP tell us to remove it, we'll, we'll remove it. So I think it's a little, I think it's a combination of, of both.
Aaron or Gary, you're here to ask a few questions?
I don't know, I might ask about the buffers. Can't see what's visible from the road or how much distance there is to anything. Whether it's apartments or parking, awful lot of parking around the. The actual six hundred thousand square foot facility. If you could speak to why there was so much parking, is that what the staff is? Is that a few shifts crossing over each time they come in?
Well, from our perspective, again, as I had said earlier. When we're doing conceptual planning of this magnitude, we have to use parking ratios that are somewhat accepted by the industry. And we find that one per thousand is not a bad number to start at. Oftentimes, the market even demands less, again, because of the e-commerce, because of the automation that goes with. Distribution, you have less and less employees and more and more automation. So you might see ratios more in the order of maybe one per twelve hundred or one per fourteen hundred. But there needs to be a market study done to understand, you know, where is the marketplace today for market, for parking demand? And let the zoning, the zoning repetition. Address that because we don't, we want to make sure that we can park this facility to be able to market it. So that's what drove the parking layout the way we have it.
Okay. And the distance between, let's say, the edge of the parking and the street?
The fifty foot setback you see in red.
Fifty foot, okay.
Yeah. So we're above, you know, fifty feet at its closest point here. And again, this plan will be refined. This parking will be tiered. Almost terraced, if you will, because of the grade changes you drop from the face of the building to the street. So we've left a lot of green space between the tiering to allow for great transition between the parking trays, plantings and so forth. They'll buffer it from the roadway.
Doug, have you thought about how you're going to bring water to the site?
That's a great question. So we know that there is a fire tower up here today. And we'll be looking at whether we need a same type of fire suppression system for a dedicated standpipe to serve the building. We have not gone in and gone as far as to say, is water available in Denham Street or some other remote location to extend it up?
It, go ahead, John.
Yeah, we've been through this. For a number of years now, and I guess the, the idea of a well in or around is probably out of the question. And the idea of connecting to Walpole through their system is out of the question. So. I think with the other applicants that have come before us, I think they pretty much. Resigned themselves to the fact that we have to carry the town water line from where it is, which is a, a fair distance away. To bring water into the site. I think most of the other ways have pretty much been exhausted, as I said, with the other applicants in the past. And that's a substantial cost.
That's very good intelligence, John. Appreciate the, the insight on that.
Yeah, the water is somewhere down, I forget exactly where, but somewhere down near the one fifteen, one A intersection.
Down in this area here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. By the way, there's, that, that water tower you mentioned, I believe, is on the. Walpole side of the town line. Is that not correct?
That is correct, Mr. Chairman. Yeah. It is, it's land owned by Southwood Hospital. It's within the. The property limits, but it does fall within Walpole.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. One other thought, piggybacking off a comment Mr. Whittleton made a few minutes ago. About narrow streets. Hill Street is a very narrow street and. I, I appreciate what you're trying to do with access there on that old railroad bed, but. I, I look at it kind of skeptically, considering the traffic load would addition, would place additionally on. Hill Street. So you, you might have to consider it again, access back out to one A.
That's a variable width roadway. I was doing some initial due diligence on that. From what I see in the survey plans of record, so. We would have to look at that right of way if we needed to widen it to a more. Traditional roadway, at least to get to the side access. We'd look at trips, obviously trips generated. By the apartments to see if it would be warranted if, if there was right of way to do it. So we would have to study that in our due diligence.
Is this road? I was just going to ask, is that road actually on the. Old train track?
Yes.
It is.
Well, that's the, that's the assumption at this point.
Okay. Yep. And what, what happened to that easement? For the, the railroad is, I thought you made some mention to it when you started your presentation.
Our understanding is the railroad gave up the rights for any future easement or access to that. And that the parcel was sold and fee to Southwood Hospital.
Okay. There, there are people in town and there is an initiative in town to, I think some of them in this meeting. There's other citizens that might ask questions, but there's a, a desire at one point was to have a rails to trails. And so even if the easement is gone across this property, I think where the track. May have entered the property and left the property. That those, that same group is looking at making a connection through here to connect into Walpole. But they can probably ask you that question when we open it up to public questions.
Is there, has there been some initial planning that's available through town?
I think so, yes. And I can see the people around the line that can speak to that.
Okay.
Aaron, you, you were about to ask a question?
Yeah, I guess it's my turn to jump in. I've got, I don't know, some questions, some comments. I'm just going to start babbling and we'll see where we go here, but. A couple of things to pick up on. Since we just mentioned it, the open space designation, I think is an important one. It was part of our previous conversations about the site. You know, this is a pretty significant development for Norfolk. You know, a, a large part of presenting this to the town is going to be what are the benefits to the town of this development? And, you know, obviously there's a couple of different ways we can approach that, that story and that conversation, but. Open space is certainly one of them. And as, as Gary just mentioned, this conversation about the, the. Trail rails is, is ongoing. It would be an important one to bring into this, I believe, because this would be a strong link through a big site. We already mentioned Hill Street. I can tell you the, the Pondville neighborhood that is. A neighbor to this development is, is one of our strongest represent, representatives in town in terms of residential development. And it is an older, a smaller residential neighborhood. And. If we want them to be friendly to the project, I don't think they're going to warm up to the idea of widening Hill Street. Again, that's, that's me speaking for them here. So. I, I wanted to mention, as you probably know, we've, there's some significant history on this site. You know, some of the things that were, we've touched on a lot in this conversation already, the zoning changes that are required, the town approach to that. Whatever we, agreement we come to with site plan approval. John touched on the water already. We touched on the storm and sewer treatment already. Those are all important considerations. We touched on the hazmat treatment already. We haven't really touched on the phasing of construction and, you know, what comes first, the warehouse or the units? Do the units come in? When do they come in, et cetera, et cetera? Bonding of the construction was a conversation in the past. In terms of the residential development, is this something that? That. That GFI is going to take on themselves or is there going to be a residential partner, development partner? I'm just, this, you don't have to answer all these now. I'm just kind of speaking out to. Things that you should be aware of and plan for, for the next, the next time we talk. Traffic's already been mentioned. I started this conversation with open space. Mitigation of fiscal impact and operation and maintenance plans are all, these are sort of key words from past conversations. I've got a few. A few items that I wrote down, sort of as. As the presentation was going on, Norfolk is now a green community. It would be interesting to understand what sustainable features might be part of this development, especially with the large roof on a six hundred thousand square foot building. I mentioned the six hundred thousand square foot building. I mean, that, that is a scale of building that is darn near impossible for anyone in this town to comprehend. Even looking at this plan, you know, that. The Gary's question about the setback from the street and you mentioned that the parking is fifty feet back from the street and. I'm guessing that most of the people think it looks like it's more than, it's like two or three feet from the street. Because it's, that's just the scale. The scale of this building is that big, right? So if there's a way to, you know. Put Gillette Stadium on here to, to give people a reference of what the scale of that building is, right? And, and, you know, that leads me to. We will continue to push you to make this as detailed and exact of a, a presentation as, as possible because. We know the types of questions that we're going to get from the town and. And they're going to ask all the questions you would expect of them. Traffic, you know, what are the numbers? What are the impacts? You know. What are the impacts on the schools from, from the residential units? All of these things are going to come up and we're going to need numbers because if. If we don't have numbers, it's just going to feed frustration, which is, is going to create a downward spiral. So. We need to have presentations and numbers that are backed by facts and, and even ranges. It doesn't, you know, we, we know that they don't have to be exact. Real numbers, but you know, you need to, you need to give ranges for people to make considerations and reasonable considerations. So. You know, I, I spit out a whole lot there, so hopefully somebody was taking notes. I guess it is recorded so you could come back and, and, and. And write more stuff down, but you know, those, that's a. That's a lot of the history of this site and, and the types of questions and subjects you're going to be dealing with. We're all going to be dealing with as, as we go forward with this. So. Good luck. Look forward to working with you.
If I, if I may, I just want to say we, we appreciate the. You know, the, I don't know if important is the right word, but we, we get that this is an important site in the town. The big site, it's an abandoned site. I don't want to put. I don't want to get ahead of myself here. We just. And that's really what we wanted to do. We wanted to get a moment with the town. To really see, show you what we want to do here in, in concept and. Get, get feedback. We, we don't, we're not interested in coming into your town. And getting in a fight with, with your town, which is not our style. It's not. You know, we don't, we're not, we're not here trying to. Shove a forty B project in, down the town or, or a warehouse project. We, we, we see this. Abandoned, environmentally challenged. Piece of property and our concept is, wow, this, this is a. This is a, a great site for, for a warehouse. That we had some preliminary talks and there was conversation about. We're, you know, maybe there's a, there's a demand and I don't know if demand is the right word. There's a, a need to help us with the affordable housing component in the town. So we, we looked at, you know, we, we, you know, this works from separation from two, two different uses and on, on, you know. Coexisting together, but this is really. Not going to happen. I, I mean, I don't say that, I think you know that it's not going to happen without the town's permission, but we don't, we don't want. We, we would much prefer you, the town to say, hey, we don't, we don't like it, get out of here and, and we'll be gone. You know, we're, we're, we're. We're. You know, a, a project like this on the forty B side, you know, serves a certain purpose for affordable housing. For your community, for new housing stock. That's a conversation. You know, we do build residential. We, you know, we have a. Portfolio that we own and we're, you know, we're, we're currently building new projects. We, we have a forty B project we're doing. Outside of Boston. We've done forty B projects in the past, but our, you know, our. But we showed up here first with a warehouse, with a warehouse idea and, and that's. The, our core, you know, that's another core competency of, of GFI and, and. You know, this building, one, a building that looks like this is going to get built somewhere in the, in the area in the next couple of years. And, you know, they, 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 they have the pros and cons to them, no doubt. They, they're big, they, they take up a lot of space and, you know, trucks come and go. But they do create jobs. There'll probably be three to five hundred jobs on a building of this size. And they create, you know, very good tax base for the communities, you know. We haven't really done the math on what your tax rate is versus value here, but you know, I would assume it's. You know, in the range of a dollar a foot, you know, on a building like this. So, you know, you, you, you'd have. Six hundred thousand dollars of, you know, new tax, you know, revenue besides. You know, all the, the income created from the jobs and everything else. But like I said, there's pros and cons to these things. So some. Some towns, these are great fit, some towns they're not. And we're, you know, our conversation with. With Norfolk is, is simply, we have, we, we really appreciate the opportunity to, to be sitting in front of the board. You know, on TV, but, and, and have this frank conversation with you guys and say, is this interesting? Do you want us? Do you want, you want to go, you want to try or is this no way? I, you know, we, 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 we don't want to see anything of this size or. In our town. We, we are. We're, we're, we appreciate, you know, your input and your, your, your insight into this, you know, good or bad, you know, our feelings are not. We're not, you know, aren't going to get it. We're not, we're here to just. Process that you guys don't want here. And, but if you do. You know, we're confident that we can build, you know, we'll bring you a first class project. We'll bring you a first class operation. And we'll build you nice housing within the confines of a forty, you know, our project. If, if that's what the town, you know. If, if that's what the town, you know, this is a good idea. And I think that the, the opportunity here is that the, you know, the real value in this site is this industrial building. And it, you know, the, the permitting of that industrial building will allow us to actually, you know, do probably what was really difficult for past developers when they looked at, you know, bringing water lines over or figuring out how to do the septic or, you know, making the roadways work. You know, we'll create enough value on the big box to help support, you know, the residential.
You know, Haley, we have, to me, I go back to that same thing. If you've got vans going through the neighborhoods in all the surrounding towns. I think if you look at the articles that are some of our budding towns that have them and have these problems. The latest article, the front page of the Boston Globe, Sunday, they create a real disturbance for the quality of life for the people. I think if you've got specs that show us, these are going to be trailers coming out of there and not 2,000 vans. And the trailers are hitting the highway to go to distribution centers. I think that's a, a whole different project. And I think that personally speaking, well worth looking into. Just to, you're back for a second on what Aaron Hunt said. He and I have been in this development scheme for Southwood for years and years now. And I think that if you're going to go try to make a connection up to Hill Street, you're probably going to have trouble getting your two-third vote, because you're going to probably have 100 votes there from what we've seen in the past. They're going to come out against it. Besides, I think that Hill Street, you're probably involved land-taking, because it's only a 18-foot road with, with sight distance problems, so.
Yeah, I just would echo what John said. I think of the two types of warehouses they described. Granted, they may fit within the current six type of warehouses, as you, you, you mentioned. Clearly, the, the last mile type of operation would really go down hard in the town, I think. There's been a lot of talk about Amazon up in Milford and what the impact on that town has been. Not favorable, by the way. And, but if it's, if you're talking about a warehouse that's an intermediate warehouse system, that might go down a lot easier.
Well, I appreciate that. And we, we're hearing you loud and clear. So I, I, and, and we are having the same conversations with, you know, on other projects that we're working on in other towns. And, and these Amazon facilities are, they are, they are really what they are. You know, they're moving all of our goods and services out of our, out of our supermarkets and our retail stores. And they're putting them in trucks and driving them to our houses. And so it's really, it's a, it's, it's a moving network and a moving kind of scientific project that's going on right now, so.
Sure, I think if this, if this site were really adjacent to 495, near an access interchange, in perhaps an industrial park, that would go over a little easier with a final mile type of.
I totally, I totally agree with you, sir. And that's why we don't think that, and, and like I said before, we, you know, the language of what can be and can't be done on this site is not going to be up to me. It's going to be up to the town. But, and we, we would be more, we would be more than willing to, you know, negotiate language that limits, you know, this, then not a last mile. I, I, I think that last mile is probably a term of art, but a, you know, we can figure out how to make sure that this is a bulk, you know, distribution type facility and not a, however we describe, a van service.
It's not going to end users, basically.
Yeah, yeah. And then on, on the, on the housing, I think, you know, Doug was really, you know, starting from scratch. And, you know, it's easy for me to look at this plan and say, you know what? If you don't want those, those units up there and you want a real connection up there, we can, we'll, we can make the, the residential unit project 100 units instead of 200 units, you know? It's really trying to help the town solve its, its affordable issue. So, you know, we don't, I, you know, unit count isn't driving the bus for us here. You know, if you say, I like those two down below, get rid of those two up above. You know, we're, we're not going to, you know, we're, that's, we'll do it that way.
I think we could work that out. We've had a couple of applicants come in and talk about affordable housing. And actually, they put it all down front rather than spreading it out as you have done. But, so there's a couple of three options that could be talked about on that front. Let's see, any further questions from board members? Then I'd open it up for questions from any of the public who happened to be on the Zoom call with us. I'd like to keep this to a reasonable time, maybe 15 minutes or so, because we do have a full agenda for other items for this evening. So anyone from the audience care to ask a question?
Hi Walter, it's Peter, not a surprise. Good evening.
Hello, Peter.
Hi, yeah, Peter Schwalbe, I'm at 58 Everett. So I'm, I'm a resident about a half mile from, from the site. Thank you for the presentation. I think the conversation's been really thoughtful. I think the board has brought up some really excellent points of, of concern or refinement that are, are very valid. I think at the outset of the proposal, you had mentioned where this sits in terms of the town. You described it as the outskirts of town and near the prison. However, there is a very robust neighborhood all around this. And you can see some of the homes in, in this faded out part here by where the rail trail is. And there's homes along 1A Valley Street, and I live very close to 115. So, you know, I know that if this operation becomes real, there will be semi-trucks and hopefully not thousands of Amazon vans. But there will be semi-trucks added to the traffic on 115 that's very close to my house and I can hear. So, you know, just, I, I just asked the group, the development group, if you guys would just take that into consideration. 600,000 square feet is an enormous footprint. I've looked at other projects. Franklin was half that size and also a little more sequestered from residential. So I, you know, as a resident, I'm certainly open to, to talking with you guys about what, you know, what could work. But definitely right now, at a very point of high concern, just looking at that number, 600,000 square feet, you know, 90 some odd parking spaces, 500 trailer spots. That looks to me and sounds to me like a lot of trucks coming past my house all night and all day. So I, I, I think with that, with that, I just want to say that, you know, I look forward to resident input and community involvement sessions that have been promised to us by the town officials as well, to help shape the project into something positive that everyone can be happy about. The other part of my small speech is simply offline. I think Rich can share with you Metacomic Greenway, if he hasn't already. That is the Greenway organization, or we call it an organization, but it's residents from Walpole, Norfolk, Rantham, Plainville, and North Attleboro, joining together to help make a connected 17-mile greenway that spans from Walpole all the way down through North Attleboro. Rantham already has gotten to the stage of feasibility study. We're hoping that we can get to a feasibility study soon as well. The, the rail bed along Southwood is a super critical part of that, because that would connect into where Walpole wants to connect, which is their new recreational fields and then out to Winter Street. So as part of resident input, we do hope that we can talk with you more about what that might look like in terms of the design and having a greenway, which would also probably help some of the homes on Everett that you can see on this picture right here in terms of a natural buffer and space between them and, and what this big development might become. So thank you for listening. I, if you have any questions, oh, metacomitgreenway.org is our website. So if you want to just hit that site, you can see a little bit about what we're about. And we can definitely help answer questions about it if you need some information.
Thank you, Peter. Anyone else?
John, it's Jen Nguyen here. Sorry, I'm doing report cards and I don't have my video on, listening. At the same time, I have two questions. One is for the planning board and one is for the development group. For the planning board, I believe, John, you mentioned that there could be enforceable restriction to the traffic flow. How is that permit enforceable? If you do make the permit so that the traffic flow has certain restrictions, is that even enforceable?
Yeah, I was talking, Jen, about putting restrictions in the special permit language to really try to capture the traffic patterns and where or where they could not go.
Right.
They wouldn't be enforceable, yes.
Yeah, I just worry about that, because, you know, you always see the J, no J break signs, but everybody J breaks, like, who's, who's really monitoring that? But that, that's one of my concerns. And two, for the development group, are you aware that Norfolk right now, our schools are maxed for space? We have pretty serious budget issues. And we also have water issues as well. So I guess my question for the development group, in terms of the 40B development, where we are at safe harbor right now, we certainly have no difficulty getting 40B projects in the till. How would it be advantageous for the town to add more people to burden our schools and our resources? So that would be a serious concern. And then also just looking, and again, it's a very rough plan. The 40Bs that I've seen, they're more condo-like, more housing units. And this is just a aesthetic. I, I just, I don't, I don't see the block housing as really fitting into structure of Norfolk. But that's something I know that is just probably my opinion. But again, how would it be advantageous to add more people when we're already burdened as it is? I don't think the $600,000 supposed income is really going to overcome what we need for the schools and what we need for water. So that's something to think about. It's a very serious concern. Thank you.
Sure, and if, if I, if I may just briefly, just to defend the, you know, Doug's drawings here. This was just simply a massing study. There's no architectural or design or, or, or anything that you would, you know, this is just to simply show, you know, kind of massing, you know? Here's a box that, you know, that has, you know, the size of 50 units or 54 units. Here's a box that's a warehouse. So, so please don't, this isn't supposed to, this isn't a, a presentation or a, you know, with, with elevations and, and architectural details and its design. This is just simply a conversation starter. The, the 40B concept or aspect of this proposal is in response to conversations we've had, which talk about the affordable housing requirements that are, that the, the town is under the safe harbor now, but ultimately is going to be required or not required, but somebody's going to come in and, you know, build some affordable housing in the town. And this, the idea was this might be the right place for it. If the town doesn't think this is the right place or, or time for a 40R or 40B project, we're not the right guys for you, because we are not proposing a 40, a, a, a housing project that the town doesn't want. So, and, and it goes back to the earlier conversation about phasing. You know, we would be more than happy to talk about, you know, although I think there are some 40B or 40R requirements about winning poll permits. But if we can help solve the affordable housing in Norfolk with a project on this site, we want to be a part of it. If we're part, if that's not part of the solution, then you can then take them off the plan. And as far as, you know, infrastructure and schooling, schools and, you know, requirements, you know, these warehouses are the, are, you know, obviously, we have to solve for traffic. We've talked about traffic. But as far as impact on towns, you know, and, you know, pros versus cons, it's, it's, it's hard. It's, it's a very, it's a very good cost benefit analysis. You know, at the end of the day, these warehouses provide significant income, tax revenue, jobs to, to towns with very little burden. So I'm sure there might be better developments, but these are really good ones.
Holly, just let me jump in on that for a second. You know, when you talk about not having a, a client yet, this warehouse could have a tenant that makes it a dock warehouse where has most of the operations done robotically. And so, you know, we have a warehouse now, Joffran, which is about a third the size of this. They pay $200,000 in revenue per year. So this is three times the size, but the assessment doesn't triple. It goes proportionately. So even if you're in the range of paying around 500,000, that's only 50, 55 and older townhouses. We'd get the same revenue for 50, 55 and over townhouses. So I think making a push for the tax revenue thing isn't probably what's going to win it. Because one of the last proposals we had were for 220 housing townhouse units, which is bringing in four times this revenue. So there's a lot of unknowns still here, but I, I don't think the town salvation is going to be the tax revenue from a warehouse.
All right, any, any other audience members care to ask a question or make a point?
I have a question. My name's Rick Clemmon. I see on here that we've got a 40B proposal. And I understand the developers not like hanging their hat on that side of it. It's more a question for the planning board under the town's affordable housing, safe harbor or coverage ratio, what have you. 40B, as I understand it, is the statute by which a developer can come in and design, develop whatever they want in the affordable housing arena and not need town approval. They're saying we're doing it under the statute of 40B. If these units were designed, developed to be affordable housing, but not under the statute of 40B, would that be a option versus throwing the 40B labeling on this, which we all know is going to raise some hairs in this town?
I, I think the answer to that is yes, and it might even be under a 40R, which is a, a cooperative venture between the town and the developer to provide affordable housing that's quite advantageous to the town financially. So the, the answer to your question is yes.
Walter, is there such a thing as 55 plus affordable?
There are, 55 affordable. I don't know the answer to that, Peter. I don't know the answer to that.
I'll jump in with two, two comments on the, on the 40B stuff. And again, I don't, I don't want to get sidetracked with discussion on the public comments. We should take notes and make sure we get back to them over time. But one thing to keep in mind in terms of the safe harbor for two years and the town's ultimate goals. As Rick mentioned, developers, you know, can essentially come in and, and propose the density that they want with 40B until the town gets to their 10% limit. We are roughly, we are under 5% of our limit. We, once the 2020 census comes out, our, our numbers are going to go up. So I believe the latest recommendation from the town or estimates on the 2020 census shows that we need over 300 new affordable units in town in order to meet 10%. The, the most efficient way to get to that number is apartment development, because 20% of the units are affordable, but yet every one of the apartments counts, because it's high-density housing essentially, right? It's as far as the state's concerned. So if you have a 100-unit apartment development and, and what, 20, 20 of them are affordable, then all 100 of the units count towards your, towards your 40B affordable housing numbers. So you could have, you know, three 100-unit buildings with 60 affordable units, and the town would be up near its 300-unit requirement. So that's, that's the quick math and concept behind the proposed development in front of you today.
Right. Thank you, Aaron. Okay, anyone else from the audience?
Yes, my name's Jennifer Swalby. I have a comment and a question. I also live in the area and I appreciate Mr. Hunt mentioning we are a very active community in terms of wanting to know what's going to be built around us. And just living here, I, I would say we are concerned about hearing trucks all hours if, if it is what you are suggesting, the widening of Hill Street. The widening of Hill Street seems um that would be an issue for me as well. It's it's already a very small street. Um, in kind of cutting into some of the neighbors that live on that street just to get some cars in and out. Um, would be a concern for me. Um. My question is, I know you have not been able to do the studies of the trucking routes to the main roadways. But where else have you put a facility that's about the same size, six hundred thousand square feet? And what is the traffic coming in and out of of those similar type facilities? This is so large, it would help us to know um that. And one thought also was, what about doing something with the fifty-five plus? If we're looking at something to bring in the tax revenue, maybe some something here that would help increase tax revenue if if that is indeed. Um, like Mr. Wellington had mentioned, a a way to increase um that for the town. Thank you.
Sure, I I I will try and answer um. Your questions that are preliminary, you know, where where we are. So on traffic, you know, we're going to need to do an ETL traffic. Study um for for A for us, for a potential tenant and for the town. Um, the um, we've built um uh, we we have a project um. Uh, about half the size of this and just uh built in Franklin, Mass. We have a project of a little bit bigger than this that we built in um Worcester, Mass. In the last uh uh year, we have a project about twice the size of this that we did in Devon's Mass. And but as far as traffic, it's really user specific. And um, so I I it's it's a generalization um to for me to answer the question without um. But you know, without a saying, you know, uh. Wh- what warehouse from, you know, where is the, what what products are moving from? You know, what retail stores or what warehouse to warehouse or or you know, where the goods are coming and going from. But I will tell you that as mu- you know, that truck drivers and warehouses don't want to be. They don't want to be, you know, you know, in traffic as much as you don't want to see them in traffic. You know, they're, these guys, you know, want to be on a highway moving at, you know, fifty-five miles per hour. They don't want to be driving, you know, at twenty miles per hour through town roads. Um, uh, the challenge for us as a developer is to convince. Uh, the users that we can get you, you know, to and from the highway quickly and without having to drive through. Making lots of turns or driving through, you know, slow roads. So it's it's a um. It's a, it's a, it's um, from both angles, it's a problem that needs to be solved. And, you know, it needs to work from from both ends. So, you know, your question is the right question. And it's the question that um, you know, the neighbors have and also, you know, the the warehouse operator have. How do I get my trucks in and out of this site to the highway? Um, with the least amount of turns and with the least um on of impact and and, you know. Single lane roads and um traffic signals are 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 um, you know, uh, are not um. You know, we have to design routes that have the least impact on 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 um. On our neighbors and on, you know, get us, get our trucks out of the, out of the, you know, back back on the highway as fast as possible.
All right, thank you. Uh, last last question from the audience and then we've got to move on.
Hi, this is Chris Monfort, five Fredericton Road. I joined late, so I apologize. Um, just on your point of the truck routes, I was curious if you take it into consideration. The multitude of events that happened at Gillette Stadium and all the various routes that get closed during that time.
We have not, we have not um got that far down the road on, pardon the pun. On analyzing traffic and and kind of the more regional road closure requirements for Gillette Stadium. That would all be sorted out in a detailed traffic study to be undertaken for a development program. Once we finalize the square footage, you know, the the a traffic study of this caliber will look at all regional intersections. Both at one A as well as one fifteen and Route one likely. Um, you know, this is a state highway. I think this is a state highway here at Route one A. So. Uh, Mast D O T will have some input as to how the traffic studies are undertaken and how the mitigation would be. So. Um, stay tuned, I guess I might say on that as we move forward on design.
So at what point would that happen um in the permitting process of going forward with this?
Well, our traffic engineer would need to take into consideration. Uh, regional or area roadway restrictions in an analysis. Because when they're doing tra- traffic analysis, they're looking at weekday and weekend peak hour. Uh, trip generation, if you will, on the local area road network. So they would be looking at things like, like you said, Patriots games and the closure, or not even Patriots games, but. Any operations, concerts and so forth over at Gillette Stadium. And taking into consideration what the road closure or detour plans are that um. Gillette undertakes for the area and incorporate that and make that, put that as a kind of a variable within the traffic analysis.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, I'd just like to uh ask GFI if they got everything that they're not up out of this meeting. And uh, anything else that you'd like to ask before we close it off and move on?
No, um, Mr. Chairman, we really just want to thank the town and thank the planning board members for for giving us the opportunity to um. Speak uh in front of you and present this and really appreciate um the feedback. And um, we'll, I I guess we'll we'll follow up with uh um Richard. Um, you know, after just to get um uh kind of figure out um uh where we go from here.
All right, well, thank you.
Walter, one one thought before we just move on here. Uh, there were, there were quite a few members of the public here tonight. I can only imagine it was for this topic. Uh, although I will guess we'll see as we go on in the meeting. But is there a vehicle or maybe the question is to Rich? What's the right vehicle for the folks that didn't get their ask their questions tonight to ask their questions?
Yeah, um, you know what? I'm going to give it some thought. I think figure out a way to kind of publicize it and then maybe they can. Write in or something along those lines. I think the other thing we probably would like to do is have maybe a community meeting. Pretty.
Yeah. So for the folks, for the folks listening tonight, what 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 do we think the most efficient fashion is to get their input?
The quickest way is to give the email, right? So that I can collect the comments and forward on to them. Art, um, art McCarthy at Norfolk dot M S. And then uh, I think probably the thing to do is we could put something up on it. We could do like a press release as well. And then I'll, we could push that out on the website then through Facebook. And I'll, and I'll put the email there with the way to write in questions.
Good point, Aaron. Thank you. All right. Thank you, gentlemen, and appreciate your your presentation tonight. And I'm sure we'll hear from you again shortly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
All right, returning to the agenda for this evening. The second item on our agenda is a B one zoning study review. Now, as I understand it, one of our members needs to recuse himself from this because he isn't a butter. And so uh, we will say temporarily adieu to John and he will join us later for the rest of the meeting. So John, you gotta, you gotta reprieve for a few minutes. So consider John one of the audience at the moment. All right, Rich, uh, please go ahead and lead us through this.
Great, thank you. I'll uh, I'm going to screen share so we can go through the slide presentation. My computer went to sleep, so please hold on. So I do have uh, for the board and the public at large, Josh Fiala from M A P C. Is uh, joined us tonight to walk through the presentation.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Josh.
I hope the heck I don't get. What do you know, Murphy's Law here. Great. Try this again. This is a little bit slow, so just bear with me here. All right, there we go. Sorry for the delay. Well, what um, a couple of things what we've, where we've moved towards is to. Work towards discussion of the zoning articles as it relates to the B one work. Um. The combination between the B one committee members and then the planning board. Um, and for tonight's presentation, we've kind of broken down. Um, the difference on your recommendations from primary, secondary, no change and optional. And um, what we hope to do is at least um. You can get through the um, the primary ones tonight, at least. Uh, maybe we can go a little bit further. That would be the goal. Um, and then the thought behind that is then we would come back to the board in January. With uh and the committee as far as more detailed language. Um, relative to the to the recommendations. Um, so the primary recommendations going through the zoning work with M A P C and the B one committee. Really centered into these these four components right now. The um, and Billy Height's always consistently been there. We've talked about that. Um, to what degree that might shape as far as height goes. Um, the second one is the the unit, the density count. Where we would need to be um to see that we could provide an opportunity for. Mixed use development in Norfolk Town Center, um but not necessarily. Um, a density that doesn't make sense from the scale and massing for Norfolk Center. The third one um is one that we we touched on a little bit with uh with parking. As far as shared parking goes and the the thought behind that is that depending upon the development. Mix on there may be opportunities to take advantage of some of the sheer parking as part of development. So we wanted to explore that a little bit, but have more detail. How do you go about making those findings and when it makes sense and when it doesn't make sense? So for example, you know, if somebody has a an office use that's. Going to be more primarily used during the day, um, maybe there's an opportunity there. Um, to share parking because they might not be there in the evening hours. Uh, or vice versa. So that's something that we're looking at. Um, like to try to move for consideration. And then the fourth one um is more. We've landed on this potential recommendation is really taking all the feedback in. From the, from the beginning of the conversation with the B one zoning work all the way up to where we um are presently. And it was trying to kind of balance off the concern for how. Intensive development be and the location of that more dense development in relation to. Other properties and neighborhoods surrounding Norfolk um Town Center. And so uh, as you see on the screen, um, this. This sketch here kind of represents what we would be talking about um as far as um. Potential changing the boundary lines, although you know what? The one thing I'm going to say for some reason. Just as an edification, as you look at it visually, I don't know what happened, but. This inner core, this shape has shifted. So I just want to caution you that that's not representative of what we're talking about. So. You um, so just for for clarity purposes, this would be. Um, so the three properties that are on Boardman Street would be this line right here. And I'll have to fix this as we go forward. I'm not sure what exactly happened, why this did this, but. And then this boundary line here is running that boundary line there. So and then we follow the rail bed and then we come here.
A large portion of the red line is lined up with the main street though, right?
Um, the red line.
That's where it shifted to?
Lined up with a railroad.
It's like, sorry, lined up with the railroad.
Yeah, shifted, yeah.
Yeah, correct.
Richard, if I could interrupt, Rich, it looks like you might have an earlier version of the presentation open uh than the most recent one that had been prepared.
Do I?
Yeah, the one, the one you sent us didn't have that as slide four.
Hmm.
No, it also had a fifth bullet on that uh on the primary zoning change recommendations.
Right.
I think there's a presentation where the the end of it is dash J F two is the one you sent to me.
And that's the one we received as well.
All right, so I got the wrong one up. All right, great.
Uh, it's dated December eighth.
But then that fixes the graphic. Yeah, that one.
All right, so let's go uh.
Ah, there you go.
There we go.
So uh, somewhat to a degree erase uh. Some of the things I told you, but not everything. Uh, so everything stays as I just mentioned. The uh changing of the boundaries and there's a slide further down with us much better representative. Um, the last.
Before we get off that, uh, the the fundamental reason for proposing that is what? Proposing the bounty change is what?
It it's really to kind of concentrate where the denser developments locate. So it's more to the center of the district and not on the periphery of it. So I know there was um concerns about assembly and properties. And then where they get much closer to the outer boundaries, which where the single family homes are located. Um, and on top of the fact that there's more likelihood that. That's probably not primarily where that we want to focus that development. So that's the the kind of. It creates a better transition, if you will, from where the higher density is to the lower density.
I got to hear more about that. All right, let's move on. Go ahead.
All right. Um, and then the last bullet item would be to uh update the site plan by law. To bring the design guidelines into the bylaw itself to 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 bring up the weight and the value of them. As it relates to uh projects in the B one.
Yeah. Yeah.
To it, to incorporate them. Now, the present guidelines that we have already seen before. If you will, right off the bat, don't match up with, as you see what's on the screen represented. Because you see um a height of three stories, if you remember, we were looking at three and a half. So if we go forward with this recommendation, then we're going to have to adjust the guidelines accordingly. So everything matches up.
Well, that's what your point says, right? With edits.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, right, okay.
Yep, let people know. So um, that being the case. Um, what I thought I'd do is I would then just, we're going to go back and forth between Josh and myself. I think I want to do a, I'll turn it over to Josh for this slide, if you don't mind, Josh, to go through slide four.
Sure. Thank you, Rich. Good evening, everyone. Just to introduce myself again, Josh Fiala, Principal Planner at the Metropolitan Planning Council. Uh, and as Rich has described, so for for people in the audience who may not have been associated with our process all along. Uh, we've gone through a substantial um amount of time uh working with the B one committee. Having a lot of detailed discussions around the the zoning characteristics of the B one district. And had uh community meetings and surveys and and got a lot of fantastic feedback from the community. Uh, and so what we've really uh settled down to is a a pretty succinct list, as Rich just outlined, of. Zoning recommendations, which we think are key to um changing the most uh. changing the most uh, inhibitive uh, of the zoning characteristics in the district today. Uh, and so that's the ones that we we have before you. And so this is a very streamlined collection that responds to a lot of hesitancy that we heard uh, from our our broader and what I would maybe qualify as more ambitious package of zoning recommendations, which we had talked about previously. So in regard to building height, this is a very good example of that, where we're pulling pulling back a little bit on that. Um, what I would describe as ambition in terms of zoning changes. Previously, we were we were um, considering and recommending a three and a uh, change from three stories to three and a half stories and to increase in building height measured in feet. Um, and uh, at this point, uh, due to the additional calculations and and build out analysis we did with the committee over the summer, I believe that the the uh, density that's needed can be achieved with the change in density while not changing the height to three and a half stories. But the change what we're recommending is still uh, adding uh, six additional feet, um, which would allow flexibility of the the way roof pitches occur, the way the ground floor height is is distributed, those types of changes. Right now, the zoning language uh, permits forty feet in height as measured to the peak of the roof and then forty six feet to the peak of the roof by special permit. And we think that the math, if you if you look at uh, arranging uh, three stories with the pitch of a roof within forty feet, that's a it's pretty tough and you don't want to compromise uh, the way an architect has the ability to design that roof to make it fit with the town center. Um, of course, they'll they'll, they are all pitched. That's a requirement. Um, and the forty six feet, if you make that, so it's forty six feet to the peak of the roof by right, it just makes that flexibility built into the zoning. They don't have to ask special permit permission for it. So that's, I think, a pretty straightforward uh, change that is there really intended to uh, provide that flexibility. And the three story height is what you have today. We're not asking for a change or recommending a change on that in any way.
You want to?
Rich, do you want to stop and discuss each one as we go?
We could, if you think that would be more productive.
I mean, you, would you rather go through all of these and then come back?
Yeah, why don't we? Yeah, why don't we go through them and then we'll come?
Alright, okay.
Alright, so.
You want to keep going, Rich?
Yeah, please.
So the second that we think is is a very critical one, and this has been can I think a consistent item all along the process, um, that the current density, which is expressed as not to exceed uh, sixteen bedrooms per uh, any single lot. It's expressed as a ratio sixteen bedrooms per acre, but then it says for any single lot. So it it may be interpreted as sixteen bedrooms per lot, um, and it definitely would if your lot is one acre. And we just think that that's not enough density to support a mixed use development in your town center. And and that has been shown through a variety of technical analyses that we've done. The build out analysis showed that the density needs to be higher, that we did some financial feasibility modeling over the summer uh, with the B one committee, and that also showed that the density needs to increase to uh, improve the fee financial feasibility and likelihood that a project would get built. So we think that a change of si- from sixteen bedrooms per acre to sixteen units per acre uh, allows that financial feasibility to get improved. Uh, and it also remains at a density which we believe would be consistent with the the character of the town center today. It's it's not often the case. I mean, it's even hard for uh, professionals like myself or or architects or others to look around at a project and say, oh, yeah, that one's sixteen units per acre, that one's eighteen units per acre, that one's six units per acre. Um, and we think that the the character of your town center can can easily support this measure. If you recall, as a as a benchmark, um, the forty R conversations which you had with the previous applicant with their concept plan and that we've had uh, around forty R discussions in the town center. Um, the minimum density for a multi-family project is twenty units per acre. So we're we're below that density measure, and this is a density measure which we think is is uh, needed uh, as a necessary change and and still within uh, the threshold of reasonable reasonable for the town center. And then that goes hand in hand with the parking. Uh, of course, if you allow more density, even on a, even if it's allowed, it's difficult to achieve if you cannot uh, gain some other efficiencies uh, in terms of what's required to go on a site. And parking is one of those um, uh, inhibitors of density that you just can't make the numbers work if you require too much parking. Today, the shared parking um, language is in the bylaw, except it requires uh, you're allowed to potentially share up to reduce the share, the parking requirements through this shared provision by up to thirty percent, except that thirty percent reduction is required to be held in land um, for future needs potentially, if if those needs were to be discovered. Um, and that does not provide a benefit uh, in terms of increasing density or financial feasibility to the project. So we're recommending adjusting that language so that fifteen percent, half of that thirty percent would be allowed to be eliminated if found uh, appropriate by the planning board. Uh, and the developer would have to show that the shared parking is viable for their development program. If if so, uh, fifteen percent of that parking required could be eliminated and not even be reserved on the site. And then the fifteen percent that it would get you up to thirty percent in the language today would still fall under the same guidance where they could, they could actually reserve that, they wouldn't have to build it, but they would have to um, hold the land for that uh, fifteen percent. So that we think that gives you, gives a uh, development a little bit more flexibility again to achieve the type of density that we're we're talking about uh, to get the feasibility up that sixteen units per acre. And and through our build out scenarios, we saw the shared parking um, requirement come into play on quite a few of the sites to make the process, to make the development program work out. And then the the last two, this is a more accurate representation of the um, inner core zoning boundary. And and really, I think it's it's to uh, if you recall, if you've seen some of the, you know, imagery along in the analyses, we did the the sys- what we call the susceptibility to change analysis on the parcels in the town center. And this this aligns with those parcels, which we think are the best development opportunities in the town center. It's effectively, in my opinion, redrawing the inner core of the town center to more accurate accurately reflect where those uh, opportunities are. And in in so doing, it also has the added benefit of providing additional buffers to some of the neighboring uh, properties which don't consider themselves a part of the town center. Um, for example, those on Boardman Street. So I think this is a, it's a um, I've been probably in some ways kind of a modest adjustment to the town core, uh, the B one core, but it I think it it is good, a good move to comfort a butters and neighbors for that, so that um, it can hopefully gain more um, support for the modest changes which we're now recommending.
Josh, point of clarification, um, these proposed changes that we're discussing here today, the primary changes would be applicable to the inner core or the entire? So this it's, this would be, the proposal is these primary changes are applicable just to this new inner core.
That that is a very excellent clarification and and a good point I should have made myself, but yes, that is true. So that the changes I've, all the changes I've described, the recommended potential changes uh, would apply to this uh, new red inner core boundary which is shown on your screen now.
It it's interesting looking at the uh, the current inner core um, as described by the yellow, uh, which are at the moment excluded by the red line. Uh, essentially, they're they're all developed. Uh, there's nothing available to be future developed, I don't believe. Uh, I could be wrong, but pretty much all have developed.
So that yellow, actually Walter, just clarify, is part inner core right now?
Yeah, that's what I'm, that's what I mean. Uh, so it would seem to me that that what what you're trying to do is extend the inner core across uh, Main Street to capture like the post office and it and those buildings. And then also down beyond uh, um, Rockwood Road to some of the lots down there. I I I need more clarification on this, but let's move on.
Walter, I
No.
I'll jump in with my two cents on this one. I I I don't think this is an attempt to manipulate the core for any, you know, clever reason. I I think that the intent behind this is listening to comments where some of these proposed changes, if applied to the entire B one district, you start to talk about pretty large uh, residential unit numbers and commercial numbers over time, if if developed that way. And the the concept of focusing on an inner core was more to focus the higher density development in a smaller area to limit the overall, you know, numbers that the town would need to support.
I I understand that, and and I think I support that idea. It's just the way that the the boundary is drawn, um, having trouble with uh, but we can save that for a later discussion. Later this evening, depending on it, what what you want to do. But anyway, keep going, guys, because we got some more to cover.
So I think I do I do want to pause and then I'd like to then go back. So we can go through these primary changes right now.
Okay.
Yeah. So we can go backwards if you want and just talk about this boundary a little bit. That might help since we just talked about it.
Okay, well, um, I'm uh, what I don't understand is why you didn't keep the current B one inner core and just add to it.
Well, we essentially did do that, I guess. I can show you. If you wanted to see the uh, here, I'll I'll just look. If you look, I know this is not representative, but if you see, this is visually the inner core in this kind of burgundy color here.
Yeah, yeah, the dark color, right?
Right. So in the new, so this is inner core, which we're proposing to take out of inner and go to, I mean, excuse me, inner to go to outer.
That's the Frank Rose house.
Correct. And then the three properties that are, well, one is on the corner of Boardman and Main, that would go to outer as long, as well as the two other properties that front uh, Boardman would go to outer core, not inner core. The second property in on Union Street past uh, you know, you eighteen Union Street on the corner would go from inner core to outer core. And then we're adding just this little section here to the inner core. So there's a little bit of extension in your core there. For the, for the most part, it's more of a retraction, a little bit contraction.
Except that all these properties where the condos are are now allegedly to be outside the inner core.
Right, but the, I guess the thought behind is that they're already developed, so.
Right, so leave them in the inner core. There's nothing more to be done.
There is. They could be demolished and redeveloped at a higher density.
Yeah. Yeah, so the the one, that's a fair point for Aaron. Then secondarily, this one up here at the top of Meeting House Road. That's undeveloped, which is in the inner core. So it would at least take it out of the inner core from a development standpoint, that vacant property. Yeah, and these properties could be you know, developed, redeveloped, granted, I think. Um, but.
The boundaries had nothing to do with where the sewers were going to be though, right? It was just based on available properties that we wanted to see built out. Was, does it overlap with the sewer plan too?
It does. It overlaps just a little bit. Um, so this this whole section on the, I'll call it the other side of the rail railroad railroad right away.
Yeah.
Is it part of the sewer expansion?
Okay.
So it's really the the ones already connected, then this, then a a Main Street lateral sewer extension. So it doesn't cover the whole area.
Okay. But that top part of Meeting House would have sewers? The sewers wouldn't extend up there. That's not what the intent is right now.
The sewer is already up there.
It's already up there, okay.
Yeah.
Rich, correct me if I'm wrong, the intent of the sewer study was to cover the inner core of the B the B one district, right?
Yeah.
We, it's part of the development, it's part of, it's part of the attraction to uh, encouraging responsible development in a smaller area in the B one district. In concept.
So specific to the red area with the exception of going over the tracks.
Right, yep.
Okay.
Alright, so so uh, what was the argument for taking the the Frank Gross property out of the uh, inner core? I mean, that's an area that, excuse me, if uh, a structure that could easily be knocked down and made into a higher densities development, and it's right there next to the to the railroad station.
Well, I think we kind of looked at the railroad right away as a nice clear boundary to transition between the inner, the the center of town and going out. So that's still outer core. It can be built. So if you remember, the 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 primary changes are for the inner core. Um, but that property still could be developed under the uh, outer core, which still allows for mixed use development. It's just not at the density level that we're talking about.
I don't know. I don't know.
Can can outer core get it through special permit or they just, you can't get the same density?
We can, no, well, we can redraw the line if there's a real push to do that. Um, but anyway, we were trying to yeah, bring the boundary a little tighter.
Okay.
But.
And and the residential properties over on Boardman Street, um, you've got uh, three of them there, one on the corner and then the two small houses, right?
Yeah. So one on the corner is already mixed use, developed. And then the other two are single family homes that ride within the the B one core, and they're both smaller lots at fifteen thousand square feet. So I think, you know, again, the comments that we've heard throughout the meeting, I think is trying to put more of a mixed use face, if you will, towards the inner part of the town, and that would, I think, I think it just point taken. It creates a nice transition, I think, and so um, it scales down. What's happening there?
Um, I don't know, the the one on the corner, the Chipman property, that that seems to me we ought to leave that in, but I I I don't know.
Boardman Corner?
Yeah.
This one here. Well, I mean, that's something that, so the the way we can approach this, we can come back with a couple of those amendments that are are suggestions from tonight. And then we can.
Rich, I I just want to jump into, I I think I think you need to consider this in terms of the overall development impact, right? And talk in terms of the total square footage of commercial property that's being encouraged in terms of the total residential units that's being encouraged. The the more properties we add to the inner core, the higher those numbers become. And the more impact it has on the town and the more work we have to do to explain you know, the larger inner core district. So again, just, I understand Walter's comments on individual sites, but I I I think taking in concept of what the approach is to this inner core, there's a benefit to keeping it smaller and not adding sites to it. Period.
Well, I guess I'm having trouble, I'm just, not understanding, but agreeing to shrink the uh, what is existing in a core down around the condos um, and around Town Hall and that area. Um, I guess I can, I can live with the with the properties out on Boardman Street. Uh, I'm having trouble with the with the Frank Rose house, taking that out because that's right downtown, um, right? So I mean, I I I understand the point of of keeping the the uh, high density development or higher density development towards the center of town. But I'd like very much to leave the the condos up on the hill within that area, and I'd like to leave the Frank Rose house and I'll I'll, I think I could could uh, understand and agree with the properties out on Boardman Street being excluded. And I could also see the addition of the properties below Rockwood Road in what is now the outer core. So that's just my thought.
Well, like I said, we could um,
I don't think you're going to, I don't think you're going to gain an argument with anybody by leaving the boundary of the inner core below the existing condos on the hill. I mean, it's not like you're adding that to the, to the B one. Um, it's just there, it's part of it, and, uh, it wouldn't even be an issue, wouldn't be brought up, I don't think.
But it is an issue, Walter, and it's, it's just, it's hard to explain it in this, and with the documents that are in front of us here. You, you need to look at the numbers that Josh put together in terms of the build out scenarios. And when you, and when you look at the build out scenarios, including a lot the size of the Meeting House Road lot at the higher density, it it's big numbers. It's big numbers for potential future development.
Because you're saying it could be raised and then rebuilt.
Correct.
Yeah, because I think one of the things that we've gone through is, you know, when we've done the build out analysis and people have asked and good questions, what ultimately could be built out with the, with these changes that we're, um, talking about? And by, like Aaron said, um, really focused in the inner core and those numbers, it's a lot more defensible and harder, a better able to understand what we're trying to accomplish because it muddies the numbers, right? So.
I mean, I just, I strongly, I strongly encourage everyone to look at the build out numbers for the proposed inner core.
Yeah.
And before we talk about expanding it.
All right. So, so then, as I understand you, Aaron, the existing condos up on the hill now slip into the outer core. Is that right?
Correct. Yeah.
Is that right? I mean, they they slipped from presently the inner quarter to the outer core.
Correct.
Okay. All right. All right. That's what you're proposing. All right. And the argument is that when you look at the the build out numbers that would go in front of the town to support the argument of changing the density to sixteen lots. If you leave those condos in the inner core and expand the potential development down the road, the numbers are overwhelming. Essentially is what you're saying.
Yeah, they're, yeah, they're bigger. I'll, I'll also add to this that today, there is essentially no difference between the inner and the outer course from a zoning perspective. They're the same thing. So you're not, you're not really changing anything. You're just, you're not changing, when you're, when you're taking something from the today's inner core to today's outer core, you're not changing anything other than the word inner and outer. What we're really, what we're really changing is the future definition of inner core.
Yeah, yeah.
So are you concerned, Walter, that the acceptance of the town, it's confusing to the town?
Yeah, it's confusing to me as to why we're, we're proposing the changes that we are. Um, and it's perhaps because I do not understand the full impact of the, of the build out analysis that that Aaron is referring to. But, uh, the argument for making this change has to be clearer, I think, is what I'm saying.
Yeah.
If if I could add just a thought on that clarity, um, from my perspective, a lot of the feedback we heard was around, um, protections for the town. How how will the town, if we're making these enhancements to the zoning, uh, to invite or encourage some new investment in the town center through mixed use development? What are the protections so that that doesn't become a runaway train for the town? And I think this, the boundary change is one of those protections. So so the worst, in some people's view, I don't view it necessarily as a worst case scenario, but in some people's view, the worst case scenario that every single property in the town center would be developed at these new recommended characteristics um, does, as Aaron is pointing to, could present a high end, um, build out that people are uncomfortable with. And this, um, and previously, we had nothing to hang our hats on to say, no, that will not happen, other than, other than our own professional experience in not, the the unlikelihood of many of those properties to redevelop just because of market, market circumstances and the condo ownership, um, all of those reasons. So I don't think those properties are likely to change in any way, but, um, that that's not a guarantee that they will not change. So the, in this boundary change, we're making it less likely that any of those properties will change and more likely that the the focus of what we want to change could, can get passed, uh, and and gain support from the town.
Yeah, I, that, I, I, I got that. Okay. Let's, let me come back to the condos on the hill one more time. If we, if we make the change and the town approves it, as you're currently describing there in the red line, and the, uh, existing condos fall into the outer, um, outer core, and someone chooses to tear them down and rebuild them, what density are they facing there?
Yeah. So the outer core, uh, would be a max of sixteen bedrooms per lot.
Same as it is now.
Right.
Same as it is now.
Which must have been the zoning, uh, under which they were constructed?
Well, so that's all forty B. The condominiums up on the hill were through forty B. So they're not, yeah, they're not even. I mean, I should probably said that in the beginning, I guess, but yeah, so they were two forty B projects.
Yeah. All right. Okay. All right. And they didn't have to pay attention to the density requirements of the zoning. Right? Okay.
Right. Yep.
Right. I think this plan looks like a good balance and consolidates that core with all these changes, which should, like Josh had said, eliminate a lot of these concerns that, that the town and the citizens of the town had.
Yeah, I also think, I love, I mean, the forty B is an interesting conversation here, right? So let's, let's look at the developments over the last ten years in town, right? Meeting House, forty B, Boyd's Crossing, forty B, Rockwood Road, forty B, Main Street, proposed forty B, right? That's it.
Well, that's it around, um, around the center of the town. Yeah.
Right. Yeah. In the B one district. All forty B projects.
Do you, uh?
And and just a caveat, you, so you've talked into, you spoke to some of these developers, they agree with changes. They, what, when, when sewers are in place, when these changes are in place? Did you speak to anybody that's eager to develop? Or take eager out, speak to anybody that's willing to develop.
Yeah, I mean, so right now is kind of a tough conversation with development because of everything that's going on in the world, but, um, so actually, you know what? Let's talk about that, I guess, in terms of Dunkin' Donuts, for example. So Dunkin' Donuts, uh, you know, one thirty four Main Street. The, as I mentioned to you before, the sewer is the, is the catalyst for them to be able to redevelop that. They would like to do, um, sixteen units. It may be a combination of one or two bedrooms, but that's it. So the, you know, the, the proposed density works for what they want. It doesn't need to be above that. Their issue is more the availability of sewer to develop, uh, their site. Um, the, um, I'm trying to think, the, uh, it may come, I mean, it might come into play in some of the other properties, but nobody's really moved per se beyond just the concept that they would like to consider redevelop, like the little plaza across the street where Linda's Variety is at and the cable, you know, he would like to add some mixed use, but you know, it's nothing, they haven't really advanced much more, um, beyond that, the point. The ones, the properties that are vacant, that are in that inner core, you know, the Liberty Lane property, and then part Meeting House. It's, it's just not, um, they're not, they're not ready to do anything. So, um, a couple of the fact that they don't have the sewer there either. So they're a ways away. So, um, the biggest hope, hopefully from this, it catalyzes the Dunkin' Donuts site, maybe Linda's Variety do some mixed use development, and then maybe somebody else comes up. But nobody's chomping at the bit just yet.
All right. If we come back to to the, uh, proposed, uh, boundary change, I, I think I, I'm beginning to understand where, uh, the argument for this comes from, which says to me that, that, uh, between Josh and Aaron, perhaps, or Rich, you need to put together a, an argument, a few bullet points as to why this is recommended. Because it isn't obvious when you look at it. It is an obvious why, why the changes are being proposed the way they are. The fundamental idea, I understand, which is to restrict the high density development to the inner core and protect the town from overdevelopment, town center from overdevelopment. So that, I guess that's the the headline of of the bullet points, but, uh, seems to me it needs to be fleshed out some more. That's all.
Did you want to, uh, so go back? So I know, I'm sure there'll be public comment. Do you want to go to public on each one or we're, or go through each, you know, to the board for each one of these primary recommendations?
Yeah, I want, I want to go through the board, let the board, uh, take a whack at these first, and then we'll open it up.
All right. So let's go back to the so building height.
Yeah. Essentially, what you're doing there is you're, you're proposing to eliminate the special permit for the forty six feet. Right?
Yeah. Yeah.
And it's limited to three floors only.
Yeah. Um, and, uh, if I'm not mistaken, the proposed language fits, uh, pretty much with, uh, the building on eighteen Union Street. Right?
Yes.
Okay, understood. Any other comments from board members on that one?
Oh.
Okay.
Density?
Yeah. Okay, uh, now how was sixteen arrived at sixteen per acre? That's the current one, right?
Was, oh, bedrooms, right?
Yeah. All right. Now, so you're proposing sixteen units. There's no definition of units. What's a unit?
So it could be a a one bedroom, it could be a two bedroom, it could be a three bedroom. It's not, it's not, uh, could be, you know, could be a studio even, I suppose, could be.
Could be, could be what, Rich? Could be three bedrooms?
It could be. Um, I don't really, uh, I think what we've kind of learned from the, the build out analysis and the market research, there isn't money in building three bedroom units. The money is in building, um, one bedroom, two bedrooms. So.
Yeah.
Um, it's not economically advantageous to go ahead and build three bedroom units. In fact, you know, three bedroom unit production happens really at forty B because it's an absolute requirement, but.
Yeah.
From a market standpoint, that's not, uh, where it's, where it's at. This would be, you know, yes, it's definitely higher than the the present, which is the maximum bedroom count. Um, we try to create some, I think, an easy way to, to go about the calculation and bring a density. Yes, it's more than what we have today. But when you apply the, the ratio on it, um, well, for example, like Dunkin' Donuts, they couldn't get more than sixteen units anyway. No.
Sixteen bedrooms.
Again, Walter, it's, it's, in order to understand these numbers, you really need to look at the build out scenarios because it starts to, you know, Josh, Josh gave a very good explanation about how each of the different factors that we took into consideration weigh in differently based on the site size, right? So again, the site size is also part of the reason the inner core boundary is the way it is, right? It doesn't do any good to put sixteen units per acre on the, the, the three small residential units on, on Boardman Street because you can't fit sixteen units.
Yeah, right. Yeah.
So, um, in terms of, you know, you're focusing on the larger sites in town, you're talking about a, a, a maximum density that the town would be comfortable with and and items like this. So, you know, the, the sixteen unit per acre number is, is a pretty common number. Uh, you know, we, we settled on this one pretty early, even years ago. It was in the original numbers and it's, it's hung tight. We've, we talked, uh, quite a while about making it go up to eighteen units and even consider twenty units because forty R is a twenty unit minimum. Um, the decision was to keep it at sixteen, and if a forty R district came in and was overlaid in the inner core, well, then you'd get your twenty units per acre. So the, you know, there, there was a lot of discussion about ups and downs, and it, this, this seemed like the right number, and it was supported by the numbers and the build out scenarios that, uh, the MAPC put together.
Sure. Okay. Well, uh, uh, I, I fundamentally agree with, with the, the, uh, idea of increased density. The only thing I'm struggling with again is, is the absence of a slide that says, and here's the rationale for that. Um, so it's, it's like for, for each of these proposed changes, there needs to be an accompanying slide that provides the argument for why it should be the way you're proposing it to be.
Yeah, and I, I think, um, point taken, I think maybe what we can do is, um, it wouldn't be such a bad idea to, so we would definitely do that in January. I think maybe we might want to have another meeting with those slides and then have a, maybe another meeting after that as far as the actual language.
Yeah.
To be able to put that ration.
Yeah. Okay.
What? And I agree with Walter. We need some sort of a slide that supports, that shows the support and why this change occurs. And then we also, there was a slide in one of the packets that we received a few months ago that showed the feasibility. It was a, just a one sheet and it showed all, it had columns and rows. It was a matrix that showed everything and the feasibility of, if we do this, this is going to achieve our goal to, to attract a developer. Um, I, I forget what that slide actually looked at, looked like, but I, I don't know if you recall that or not.
Yeah, so we, we kind of made little executive's decision, probably go a little minus, check minus here, but we were going to put that in there, but we were trying to balance how much to put in, not put in. So we'll definitely bring that back. I think that, that's.
I think it just shows, it's just a nice summary.
Yeah.
May, matrix that just supports, all these changes are driven by this goal to, you know, what is our, what's the goal, the, you know, to create this walking downtown and have mixed use and, you know, so it identifies that here's the goals. And to accomplish that, to attract developers, this is what needs to happen.
Yeah.
Good point.
I agree.
And this was not considering sewers, so wastewater treatment is part of the land. It's some portion of it gets sacrificed in each acre.
Yeah, they'll have to, uh, if it's, you know, so beyond what is connected to sewer today, if they want to build out, they have to rely on onsite wastewater.
Yep.
Along with stormwater and building and so forth. Yeah.
Well, that's about to change though, isn't it, Rich?
What's that?
The, the availability of sewer?
Well, I mean, potentially, but it's, it's, it's not by any means tomorrow. I'll put it that way, right? So, um, it's, so.
These changes are standalone regardless of the sewer.
Correct.
They, they should drive the change that we're looking for.
Correct. And.
And if we can get the sewer to work out, that makes it even better, right?
Right.
Right.
Okay, next slide.
The parking?
Yeah, um, I, I got it. I got what, what Josh had said there that, uh.
And just for the board, I know we're going further, deeper into the slide. So one of the recommendation is not to change the parking count, so it's still one point five per unit.
Mm hmm.
So.
Yep.
I know we're going to get to that a little bit further, but just, I think it's probably important to state that now because.
Yeah.
Talking about parking, so.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, yeah, what, what is being proposed is just cutting back the amount of reserved space that one must have if you get an agreement to, to share, right?
Correct.
Yeah, from 30% to 15%.
Correct, so you could forego that amount, but they're gonna, like I said, they're gonna
So Rich, just again, in the history of the town, has the town ever asked a development to put in more parking?
No. No, generally speaking
You're talking about the town center, Aaron?
I'm talking about all of the developments in town that reserve 30% of their parking space for future parking if needed.
Yeah, I don't know how many of those there are, if any, I don't
We haven't, so to answer the question, for the most part, we have more intensive parking requirements than many developments would want it. If they, if they said from a market standpoint, what I would put in versus what's required, we usually require far more than what they want from a market standpoint, so if they, if they, so counter to that, if they feel like they need that parking, they're going to put it in, right? So
The only one, the only one I'm, only development I'm aware of that has reserved parking is the Camgar project that we just approved.
Right.
That's the only one that I know of.
But they wanted to remove parking, not put in more parking. That's what Aaron is talking about, you know, it's not
Yeah.
I think that, well, yeah, we should go back to the first one, so so I think the, hopefully the incorporation of the design guidelines in the site plan is pretty self-explanatory and, and the rationale for it, so.
It is, presumably that you could gin up another draft of those design guidelines and circulate them?
Yeah, yeah, so
The issue, the issue with doing that is you need to, you need to give the MAPC reasonable direction and what the numbers are.
Yeah, so I think once, I think probably the, the logical thing is, once we kind of nail down the proposed zoning package, then we'll circle back to you know, simultaneously work on the design guidelines, so
Okay, understood, yeah.
Alright, so do you want to open up to B1?
Let's see, is there anyone in the audience who care to ask a question or make a comment?
Yeah, so we have B1 members in the audience and we have public as well, they're
Okay, well, they can identify themselves as to which they, they are. They're all public and some of them are B1 as well.
Right, right. So any
Peter Diamond through the chair?
Hello, Peter.
How you doing, Walter?
Good.
I'm curious if a developer exceeds 10 units on their property, are they still required to add affordable units at that point?
So the affordable, 10% affordable housing does apply?
Yeah, yeah.
Does it start at 10?
Starts at 10, yes.
Starts at 10, yes.
Could you explain how many units would be applied as affordable if someone took the full 16 units per acre? So how many would be affordable?
If it if it was rental, it would be, in this case, probably round up to two.
That's if the site was one acre.
Yeah, it's one acre.
Two affordable units, thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, this is Sandy Myatt. I had a question on the limit of the number of bedrooms. Is it possible, so you're changing from 16 bedrooms to 16 units, and I suppose that could go up to 48 bedrooms if you went to three, but Rich said not likely feasible. But would, would you consider adding a limit to the number of bedrooms so that it would not exceed, you know, a certain numbers, let's say, you know, 24 bedrooms per acre or 32 or, you know, something so that it doesn't go up to 48 bedrooms per acre?
So we did talk about you could apply a different ratio, just based on bedrooms potentially. We did talk about that. The one thing we can't do is what we did, we had to remove what we did last year, is we can't regulate by bedroom. So that's discriminatory.
Explain what you mean by that. You can't regulate by bedroom?
Yeah, so as far as fair housing goes on the Fair Housing Act, you can't limit bedrooms. So for example, you can't say one bedrooms, two bedrooms, three bedrooms. You can express density as a ratio like this, units per acre. You could express it as, you know, Ax number of bedrooms per, but but you couldn't then break it down and specify only one and two bedrooms, not three bedrooms, so.
Right, so the developers, so if, if we followed her suggestion and picked it up, just for discussion purpose, picked a number like 32 bedrooms, it would, we would have to leave it to the developer to figure out how to configure the building to accommodate the 32 bedrooms, some combination of ones, twos, and possibly threes. Right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, alright.
Which is just similar to saying 16 units. I'll also add to this that, again, it's, it's difficult to see these numbers. I don't, there's a lot of new names in the meeting here tonight. There's two years of conversation about a lot of these items. I encourage you all to, to look back at some of the meetings we've had for the B1 and planning boards conversations where a lot of these items are, are covered in more detail. And again, in the, one of the more recent conversations, Josh and his group gave a presentation about what the upset limits are, what the limiting factors are for the sites downtown and you know, we, we get a lot of questions from the general public about, well, what's stopping someone from coming in and putting 300 units on a site? And quite frankly, the answer is, is the size of the site. There's not a, there's not a single site downtown that can support 300 units. So if you start to understand, I know what Rich and Josh are attempting to get at here by limiting the primary zoning conversation items, but you really need to take into consideration some of the other items that have been discussed because all of the limiting factors play to, they work together to limit the overall development. So on, on some sites, the 16 units per acre is the limiting of development. On some sites, the max building footprint is the limiting factor, right? On some sites, the size of the site is the limiting factor, so there's, there's a wide variety in our, in our small downtown and, and because of that wide variety of size, there's a wide variety of limiting factors. So I, I think the reason I'm rambling on about this is you'll find that the 16 units per acre is actually not the limiting factor for most of these sites. It, it's other factors that limit the overall density to these sites. In other words, the sites don't support 38 bedrooms.
Yeah. If I could just add a comment too on that, the, the move from bedrooms to units is, is purposeful, so we're also, we're increasing the density, which is one of the purposes of this change, but the, the language is important also. I would say that the, the use of units per acre is what I would consider the standard way to define residential density in zoning, and that's what you see used in 40B, 40R, those, those types of programs as a unit of measure, not necessarily the exact density that we're talking about. And, and so what you're doing is, is in that language change, you're giving the flexibility, as we're trying to do for the building height also, to the developers that they have control over their development program, how they break that bedroom count down.
Hi, my name is Josephine. I'm on the, I, I, I guess I'm a member of the zoning board, I represent the zoning board. I was asked to sit on some of these meetings. I do think that the 16 units in a way could be good in a sense that it's cheaper for a developer to come into town and build another bedroom, but they're going to have to think twice if it's going to be another unit. And that in itself, because it's, you know, it's, it's a cost equation, well, you know, they're focused on profits. That in itself could, you know, inadvertently deter over expansion. Also, the parking, the parking is limited. I know that there's shared parking, but if we don't have a whole lot of parking and, you know, you know, a completely clean slate to work on, like 40B developers would work on, then that also is going to limit it in a sense. So I don't necessarily think that the 16-unit idea or concept is a bad idea.
Thank you, Josephine. Anyone else? Well, hearing none. Rich, that's where you want to stop, is it not? Just talking about the primary ones this evening?
Well
No? Alright, you want to keep going?
I mean, I'd like to go on, but the interest, it depends. It's up to the board. I mean, we like to go further, but I mean, if, if I could, you know what, maybe, let me do this. Why don't, why don't I skip over secondary? And I think this side, the, the no-change recommendations, I think would be helpful too, since I touched on it. Which was, again, Peter Diamond asked a question, so the percent stays the same, 10% affordable. There's no ratio as far as uses go. It's, you know, first floor, commercial, residential above. There isn't residential on the first floor. Building scale, we talked about. And again, that's where the build-out analysis came in. We're keeping building scale the same as it exists today, so there's no change recommended there.
That's what, 15,000 square feet?
Yeah, that's the max.
Okay, yeah, well, it doesn't say square feet. That's what I wanted to make sure.
Okay, so that, sorry, yes, 15,000 square foot max. And then keeping the residential parking rate, or requirement the same, 1.5, so no change there. The meantime, I did see a handoff from Martha, I think it's Martha or, or Chris. Martha?
It's actually me, so I, I just didn't want to move past this without circling back on the discussion of the map that showed the boundaries. I'm just questioning why, like in the previous discussions, I don't remember the Chipman property that, that fronts Main Street being excluded. I, I was an advocate for the other two. Hey, why are we including these? But I don't know, the, the Boardman and Main Street property would seem appropriate that that would stay in. With the argument being sort of similar as to why the Frank Gross property and I you know, that's a, that's been a commercial building for years. So again, I don't know why we would take those two out, just to echo Walter's point, I guess. That's all.
Yeah, I'm still in favor of both of those being in too. Okay, why don't you
I just, I just don't remember, was it, like, at what point was that discussed? I, this seems new.
It is new, it is. So the, the previous discussion was really the two past the corner lot, 220 Main. But again, it, I think the, it created a hard boundary on that side and it, it's already developed, so what, what's there today could be remain and then be under the outer core density, which is really the kind of present zoning, and not get into the, the higher density that we're talking about, things that
Well, but if that, but if that is truly the intent of what we're trying to do here, and we are trying to stay open to the possibility of lots being combined, particularly the smaller ones, that would seem a lot that would make sense to be together. And I, I hear you that it makes a funny sort of boundary line there, but that seems just as arbitrary as why those other two lots were included. So like, I don't want to follow up on one bad decision with another.
You just talked about the 220 Main Street lot being out or taking that
Yeah, in, in other words, there's the, the Main Street Boardman property, I don't, I'm not sure of the number, Mr. Chipman's property, which I would feel makes sense to be part of that downtown. It fronts on Main Street. It's presently a mixed use, although it's not commercial in the first place, zone for that. That's the intent someday, so that seems like this perfect fits in this profile. I, I agree that the two properties behind that, that extend down Boardman probably are inappropriate to be in. But for the same reason that, I, I don't know why we would now exclude the Gross building, which again, traditionally commercially developed, I mean, if it's just for the sake of the shape, that seems like an odd choice.
No, no, I mean, it's definitely not the shape. It's, it's really the transition of defining the inner core. And that, that was the, no, I'm talking about Rockwood Road actually, so Mr. Gross's building, so he still can develop it under the outer core, it's just that it's not, it wouldn't have the increased inner core options if it went forward, so. But it's, this is not an absolute, so I guess what I would say is we can present both and talk it through, you know, a little bit further, then maybe that stays in and, and it goes forward that way, so.
Okay, let's see. The only other thing I'd like to just mention on the slides that you presented in this package, optional zoning change recommendations, change applied to B1 inner core. The first one says possibly under the uses prohibit gas stations. Well, I, I presume the language would say prohibit, prohibit future gas stations and grandfather the existing one. Because you're not going to change the zoning and kick the current station out of the center of town, right?
No, so by operation of the zoning law, it would be legally non-conforming if it were to be prohibited, so it, it really would be, it still operates today and it would tomorrow if that was, if it was recommended to take and prohibit it. You know, you couldn't have any future gas stations. That would could be, I suppose, re, you know
Reworded, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, well
Fair enough. You understand my point. Let's not work it now, but I, okay, move on. Anything else that you want to bring up, Rich?
So I think we felt pretty strongly, although it's optional, the PMLD really didn't have, sorry. The value, the value of the PMLD seems not really that
I agree, I agree, yeah.
Worthwhile, and it create more, again, I think that kind of created a lot of concern too with development density because this PML provision allowed for much smaller lots to be done. So the thought being, I think, the PMLD probably in concept is not a bad idea, but in application, it doesn't seem to work from working with some of the ones you already have. That there's another way, if somebody wanted to have multi-lot development and different ownership and share infrastructure besides a PLMD, right? So somebody could create a, you know, a land lease for the building and share the common infrastructure. It doesn't need to be, it doesn't need to be done by a zoning mechanism. It can be allowed and, and taken care of outside the regulatory scheme.
Yeah.
And I guess, well, we'll do a quick, I guess setbacks, secondary change, I think it makes sense, pretty much should be a primary one that we want to met, the building setback should match what's in the bylaw now.
Yeah.
And we want to try to encourage more park, parking, so we would add that. And then we would like to consider adding some other uses that probably could be good uses for downtown under the third bullet. The fourth bullet, I think we probably would not want to see
Yeah.
motor vehicle sales. There is still a question about whether one, whether we need to change the, this definition or not. More than one building on a lot. Uh, more than one building on a lot. So we'll, uh, I don't think we need to tackle that one right now, actually.
But we should allow it, right?
We do, yeah. I, I'm going to talk to Bob a little bit more about this because we do have multiple buildings on one lot. I just want to be sure that there isn't some trip up.
Right.
Won't allow that, so.
Yeah.
Particularly if we go ahead and remove the PMLD, um, I just want to be sure about that.
Yes, okay.
There is another, so that, so I guess, uh, overall, I think we need a little bit of work to do on the package as far as the rationale. Um, I think there was at least some consensus of, um, the, the primary changes. That's at least what I, what I heard. Is that?
Yeah, all right. Yeah, I agree.
I don't think any of these secondary changes are not acceptable. And then the no changes are, uh, I think would hopefully make sense. So we would want to come back with some language and some more, um, supporting material to, for rationale why these recommendations should go forward at the next meeting. Um, and then get into a, a subsequent meeting about the language itself. And then hopefully to get a vote to put it to the warrant. And then we would go to the next phase, which would really be um, outreach to different boards and committees and holding meetings with the public. Although unfortunately still right now virtually, but, um, on the zoning packages.
Yep, okay.
Right? So that's kind of the rough roadmap.
Yeah.
I know Martha or Chris has a hand up.
I, I had a, just a quick question on that last slide, the top one, the setback to six feet. What was, what's present? Wha- wha- what are we changing from to go to six feet?
So actually technically right now it's zero. But the bill two line in the zoning bylaw is six to nineteen feet. So we want to have the, the setback match the bill two line.
That was my understanding. I thought it was sixteen or nineteen feet, uh, but it's in fact zero and we're moving it to six.
Yes, yeah. So we want to have, yeah. Yep.
Question through the chair, Peter Diamond.
Go ahead, Peter.
What, what is the setback, Rich, for outside the business core?
It's still the same.
On the frontage?
Yeah, so the.
Still six feet to nineteen feet?
For, yes. So we want to actually, so that one, I think we actually want to, I'll look at it. I think we want to make sure it matches in both an inner and outer core.
Because if you take two twenty Main Street uh, out of the inner core, then you created a non-conforming property, wouldn't you, if it didn't comply with the setback?
Yeah, let me, um, I'll take, I'll double check on that.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, before we move off this, uh, we, we had the, uh, audience able to raise questions about, uh, the primary, uh, zoning proposal, zoning change proposals, and we touched on the secondary and the optional and, uh, no change. Any questions from there, from the audience on those slides before we move on?
I just had one, uh, one commenting question. Um, I could tell that there's been, there's been some more work done on this. Um, it's becoming more apparent now that it's evolving. Um, and also I had a question, are there any more, uh, any more conditions or, um, not necess, but I, I guess not allowed uses uh, in this area, which is currently being allowed besides the gas station?
So at the moment, the only ones that i- it's the auto, the limited use motor vehicle sales and then the, um, the gas station, um.
Yeah, those two, right?
Yeah.
So there's no, nothing else that we're disallowing that is currently in existence?
Correct, yep.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right, Josh and Rich, thank you very much and appreciate the contribution of the board members and also, uh, questions from the audience. So thank you very much. And, uh, we'll move on to the next agenda item. Which is a review and approval of certificate of action for ninety-five Holbrook Street Site Plan decision for construction of a well field and pumping station for the Norfolk Public Water Supply. Rich?
So I did circulate a, uh, draft and, uh, did give one comment, uh, later a comment from, from Chad, which I did change on the waiver on section seven point four, three point one six. Um, I did forward to the board, the fire chief is reviewed as, it's acceptable to him.
Yeah.
Building commissioner reported back on the parking calculation. And then Janet got back to us, uh, relative to the, uh, there are no jurisdictional wetland issues with the site. They've, uh, kept all the development outside the, uh, the buffer zones.
Right.
Well, I think we've landed on a, we're, hopefully that draft decision is ready to be voted on by the board. Sign it and then, uh,
Yeah. Okay, I, I have read it and, and, uh, I'm comfortable with it. All right, let's see. The chair will entertain a, uh,
Is John back, by the way?
Uh, that's a good point. Uh, let's see. I don't see him here, uh. Wait a minute, maybe this, can we get?
I don't see him on the screen. I'll, uh, I'll text him. Well, I left a voice message with him, so we'll see if he. I think you want to?
Well, we can, uh, we can proceed, I believe, uh. We have four members here. We have a quorum. We can go and, uh, hopefully he can catch up with us.
Okay.
Why don't we, uh, why don't we give him another, why don't we keep going and then five minutes or so, we can give him another jab to see if he come back in?
Okay.
All right, so, uh, what I propose then is to have a motion to approve the site plan application decision number twenty twenty dash zero six for the ninety-five Holbrook Street Well. And then, then open it up to discussion from the board and, uh, then call for a vote. So with that, hello?
So moved.
Very good. And, uh, we need a second.
Second.
Very good. Thank you, Chad. All right. So any discussion on the, uh, site plan vision? We've all had a chance to read it and, uh, we've thoroughly discussed the issue. We've, uh, taken the inputs, uh, from our engineering consultant Beta and, uh, DPW has, has responded. I believe all the issues are closed and we're ready to approve this decision. Any further comments from the board?
Do we?
Yep.
Oh, is Aaron there? I don't see Aaron.
Uh, he was, but I don't see him either. Nope.
We need Aaron. Or John.
All right, let me text.
Are you texting, uh, John?
Yeah, I already texted John, so, um, I called him, so let me see.
Do we need four, Walter, or is three? We need four.
Yeah, we do. We need four, right?
Rich, did you text Aaron?
Yeah, he's signing back in.
Okay.
I hope. Haven't seen him yet.
He, he, he texted me, he's signing in, so hopefully.
On Aaron.
He'll be. He'll be here. I know he will.
There he is.
All right.
Uh, Aaron. Okay, Aaron, we have a, uh, motion on the floor to, uh, to approve the site plan application decision number twenty twenty dash zero six for the ninety-five Holbrook Street Well. Um, we have, uh, had a chance to read it and, uh, we've discussed all the issues. We've had our engineer uh, consultant Beta review it. Uh, the issues raised by Beta have been addressed by DPW and, uh, I believe we're in a position where we are ready to vote to approve this, uh, decision. Any, uh, discussion from any board members? All right, then, then, uh, the motion is to approve the site plan decision number twenty twenty dash zero six, and we'll take a roll call vote. Uh, Mr. Hunt?
Am I motioning or am I approving?
You're approving.
Aye.
Mr. Peck?
Aye.
Mr. Searle?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. All right, um, Barry, I think you're all set.
Thank you.
And we will, uh, we will respond to Betsy when it's available to sign down in the town hall.
And so we, um, and we have, uh, Barry, love every error, our assistant DPW with us and our, uh, town administrator online, although she's hiding, but, um, I know she's there. I see her. Um, so that they can, uh, we'll go to the next topic. I know, um, not, not very, brief update relative to Fox Run. Uh, we did have an internal meeting where we went over some of the videos. I think we have a better, uh, uh, handle on things to then meet with Pulte. So the next step would be to set up, uh, a meeting with them to discuss the repairs and what we see as, um, what needs to be done, um, going forward to, to, uh, make, I'll call it, uh, permanent repairs.
Can you, can you share any of that with the board?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I sort of like to share it. The, Pulte will watch the video and they'll get it secondhand, but that's fine. Uh, I think the consensus was that some of the, the pipe, the pipe replacement worked. The, um, the other methods except for, um, into, right, Barry, into, um,
In, in situ, Rich.
In situ, sorry. Uh, essentially a liner into the drain line.
Slewing it, yeah.
Yep. Everything besides that didn't work, so I think the, the landing spot was to, to do that to the rest of the areas to, uh, make sure, uh, we're good going forward, so.
So sleeving didn't work? Or did, did everything you looked at worked or only one portion?
No.
Yeah, they. Rich, I, I could, I can fill it a little bit. So there was, there was packing that was done. Um, that works somewhat, somewhat, but some areas fell out. Uh, there's still internal cracks evident in the pipe. Um, so based on what we're looking at, you know, the, the cracks are internal. We don't think they're external to the pipe. Um, so if we seal the pipe with the in, in situ, which is a fiberglass tube that seals the wall of the pipe, we think that'll give the pipe the rigidity that it needs. Um, and a lot of, a lot of water to flow like it should and nothing to infiltrate the pipe. Um, so between Phil and myself, I know John and Walter were there as well. I th- we think this is the best, uh, plan moving forward.
Okay. Well, these pipes partially collapsed, the ones that they're trying to fill?
No, there was nothing collapsed. It was more of, uh, levels of cracking within the pipes.
Okay.
Um, and again, the, the different can, camera angles magnified the cracks at different levels. Uh, so it was tough to get a uniform idea of the thickness of all the cracks, but, uh, Beta did a good job analyzing what we had. Uh, and, and I'm thinking, like I said, I think the inset two would be the best way for the town to.
And, and one last question, not to belabor it, but, uh, you had old and new video and you were able to compare old cracks to see if they propagated further?
Yes, yeah. Beta actually spent a lengthy amount of time. Uh, Phil actually did it on his own time. Uh, did a comparison with everything that they had before them. So it was a thorough analysis.
And that did occur? Cracks got worse over time?
Um, it was tough, tough to say because it was different resolutions through all the times.
Sure.
I think the clarity for this round of video was probably the best we had, um, and gave us, gave us a good idea of what was there.
Okay.
And Phil created a map that shows, uh, where all the discrepancies that he, he viewed are located within the, the, uh, drainage system. Which is very, very helpful. In addition to the table that he created, uh, which shows all of the uh, approved, okay, and, and, uh, not okay issues.
But then the next step, like I said, is to meet with Pulte, hopefully say, this is what we find needs to be done to move forward. Hopefully they agree, um, that work could get done and then simultaneously, um, we need to work on the bonding, um, that we talked about as assurance going forward to protect the town, so that those things would, uh, happen a little bit simultaneously. The roads, just as a practical matter, if this all works, it wouldn't be on the Springtown meeting. So really talking about the fall of twenty-one, but just as a mapping.
Gary, Gary, I don't know if you're available, but, uh, if, if you are, um, you're welcome to join this discussion with Pulte, so you get the full picture of what's going on.
Sure, I can be available.
Rich, can you reach out, make sure you include him?
Sure.
Okay.
All right.
Any further discussion on that?
So then we'll shift gears to, uh, Noon Hill Acres, Redwoods.
Right.
Right. So, um, what I want to do is, uh, share my screen to, uh, at least segue into the, can you see my screen?
Uh huh, yep.
So hopefully.
That's the next issue.
Yes, it's, it is, but it's somewhat, it's, it's related, right? Cause, um, one of the things that, um, I know the residents have been painfully waiting for is this, what you see on the screen is a street sign. Um, which Mr. Dazel hasn't put in. So what, what's before you? And hopefully, um, as we talk about street signs, you like what's on the screen because this actually is the sign. So, uh, we could return it if it doesn't work out. But anyway, so this is, this would be the pro. this would be the prototype going forward, street signs where it would have the black and white seal, the, um, the lettering with the circle, the coloring combination. And so over time, the street signs in, in the town would be replaced with these which, uh, meet, um, M U C, M U.
Federal, federal highway retro reflectivity standards and mass DOT MUTCD standards.
Yeah, there you go.
There you go.
So that's the, that's the, uh, what we're trying to move towards. Um, I know the selectmen took it up. Oops, sorry, my apologies, select board. Um, took it up at their last meeting. Um, I know it's going to be a topic of discussion at their, the December fifteenth meeting. So they would, uh, they defer to here to get the planning board's input, input on this. And then, uh, so we'll like to have a discussion on that too. But let's go. No, I don't know. You want to talk about this and then go back?
Let's finish this since we're on it. Let's finish it. All right, my, my point of view is I think this is a great addition to the town. Um, and is long overdue to change the street signs. But I would, I would argue strongly that we should opt for putting the reflective tape on the, on the streetlight, uh, uh, the signposts, street signposts. Um, we've all driven around the towns around us that have it, which are, um, Midway and Foxborough. And when you're looking for a street sign at night, boy, that tape really lights up and you can find out where the sign is and get up close to it and read it. So, uh, I don't know what the additional cost would be for us to put the tape on the street sign posts, but I would argue strongly for doing it.
That'd be, it's, it's thirty-six dollars, um, for the six-foot reflective. Uh, we just did those on, uh, Union Street. Uh, we just put in some speed limit signs and some pedestrian alert signs. Um, so it's, it's unfortunately, it's thirty-six dollars a strip.
What color, what color's a strip? Is it the same that matches the street sign?
Yeah, it would be the retro reflective green. So I can look into it and cost it out. Uh, we do have a cost right now per location to put in a new sign and a new steel breakaway post on our main streets, uh, where there's a cross street, there'll actually be two signs. Uh, so for example, where Main Street intersects Boardman, uh, there'd be a sign for Main Street and a sign for Boardman. Uh, so all major roads will have two signs per post. Secondary roads will have one sign per post.
Uh, comments from board members on, on the proposal?
Is the intent to replace every sign in town?
Um, it's gonna be a slow, methodical process, um, in discussions with Blythe. Uh, we're looking to budget this throughout over time. Um, ideally, when we have to, let's say, one of the existing street signs is broken or needs to be replaced. Uh, we put the new sign in. Um, any road that we pave, any roadwork, our goal is to update all the signs at that time. Um, you know, we're looking at roughly forty-six thousand dollars uh, of an investment. That's just for the street signs and we still have to deal with all of our regulatory and, uh, um, guide signs as well.
So in, in the places where there's the white posts with vertical black letters, um, you'd replace the whole post?
Yep, that's all coming up.
Okay.
Well, uh, Barry, how much would the, uh, would the tape add to the cost of, uh, of these things over the, over the course of four or five years, whatever it's going to take to, to replace them all?
I, I'll work on that number. I can work out that number tomorrow, Walter, and give you a ballpark idea. Um, so I have a price per location, um, for the posts and the single side. I didn't factor in the reflective strip.
Yep.
Uh, that's something that we might want to think about doing. You know, maybe we do that at our materials and collectors on our main roads and then our secondary roads. We don't do that. I have to see what the cost is. And again, we're gonna have to sit down with Blythe and everybody else and see what we can fund.
Yeah, fair enough. Right, okay.
So, so back up to, you were talking about whether it was one sign or two signs?
Yes.
What were you saying about that again?
So main, like main roads, our main arterials, let's say like, uh, Main Street, uh, Seacong and Needham. We need to have a, a indicator, um, the, the main street sign and then the side street sign. So it'd be Main and Boardman, uh, Midway and Main, and then all of our secondary roads would be single signs.
So on, on Midway Street, for example, when you reach Lake Street, you would just have a Lake Street sign?
Uh, no, it would be, yes, yeah, on that side, it would be on the main street side would be Lake and Main Street.
True, true. But on, on Midway Street, which is a secondary street, when, when you got to Lake Street, you just put up the post with Lake Street sign on it.
Correct, yep.
That's, okay.
And so the thought behind that is just cost savings, just keep it simple?
No, that's actually, uh, it's a MUTCD standard, um, based on the, the traffic on a roadway. Um, so it has, you have to have the, the, the main sign and the secondary sign.
And so I'll jump in with a couple of comments. I mean, I, I think it's worth taking this to the design review board as well. I think there's concepts of, of color and long-term planning that should be taken into consideration. Uh, I know there's not a lot of options.
Nope.
Uh, but you know, the town, town certainly has colors. Should probably take it in consideration with the design review guidelines downtown, the lighting requirements, et cetera.
Well, I think it would trump, trump the lighting requirements because this is federal highway standards. Um, the four colors we have are blue, brown, green and white. Uh, those are federal highway standards and MUTCD standards. So there's really no wiggle room. Um, the size is already set. Everything is pretty much already set for us and we just have to go by the guidance that's there for us.
Yep, no, I get it. I just, I mean, uh, one would presume that of the four color options, one would be better for, you know, the overall goals of the town center than another. I don't know which one that would be, speaking offhand, maybe it's green. I, I don't know, but, uh, I mean, design review boards there for a reason to be. I think it would be worth getting their input.
What, what did the selectmen do to take this issue up again?
The fifteenth.
Fifteenth.
Uh, Aaron, is there a, a meeting between now and the fifteenth?
Not that I know of, no.
Well, maybe, maybe you could circulate something informally, uh, through email.
Yeah, I have materials prepared that, that we've been sending around. Um, I have a package actually today that I kind of drafted to give more explanation as to the reason why we have to do this. Uh, back in twenty fourteen, uh, this was actually implemented. This is how far we, uh, far behind we are. Um, so in twenty fourteen, we should have started on this process. Uh, now we're kind of picking it up now as we're, as we're sitting here.
Yeah.
Yeah, again, I'm, I'm not trying to slow down the process or anything. I just, I mean, there's, there's boards and committees in town that are here to comment on these things and, and how they fit into the overall planning process and, and the goals of the town. I, I think it would be a shame not to get their opinion on it.
Well, I agree. I just, uh, would like to do it expeditiously, that's all.
If I can jump in for a minute? This is Blythe.
Yes, Blythe.
I just want to say that, I mean, the select board is planning to discuss it next week. Um, and really, we're trying to move on this so it doesn't hold up Redwood Circle any longer than it needs to be. But if we eat another couple of weeks and wait until the first meeting in January for the select board to make a decision, that, maybe that would give design review some time to give us their thoughts.
Gracious offer. Can you do that, Aaron?
Well, uh, I don't control the design review board, but I can certainly let people know that we need to meet.
Okay.
Uh, maybe, Rich, I could use some help on that one. I, I can't circulate materials, right, from public meeting notices, so.
No, so I'll, I'll work with Barry to get the packet over to the design review board to have them, uh, set up a meeting.
I think, I think really the, the only option is the color, right? Ri- Rich and Barry, I mean, everything else is set by federal and state law.
Yeah, the option we, we have is, is the color. Uh, we went with the black and white logo, because if you notice in some towns, I have the colored logo. Uh, the town seal, it actually fades quicker than the rest of the signs. We, we thought the black and white logo was a little bit more aesthetic and it will last longer. Uh, that's really the only change we could do would be the logo and the color of the sign.
Right. That's my understanding as well. I mean, and I'm, my personal opinion is I would go with green. Um, that's what most communities throughout the nation use. I have seen blue. Can't recall if I've seen brown anywhere, but most, most communities use green. It doesn't mean we have to be like most communities, but there is some, I guess, benefit to having that standard so that when you do have, when you do drive through our town, it's, it's easily recognizable.
Yeah, Chad, we did a little study. Uh, most of the towns around us have blue. Uh, because one of the comments that came up from the board of selectmen was, is, you know, everybody liked that white post because it, uh, it made Norfolk Norfolk.
Yep, it does.
So, you know, if we, if we go with green, it's a little unique to our area.
Right.
You know, brown is more of those park signs that you see. Uh, my concern with the brown, uh, Norfolk being ruled, uh, are we gonna be able to see it in the fall with a, with a brown leaves behind it? The mockup of the white, eh, wasn't very good looking. Uh, but ultimately, you know, we have to kind of listen to what everybody says, put it all together and, and put in what everybody kind of wants.
Yep. No, I, I saw this.
You can make the argument that the white is closest to what we have now.
Yeah, yeah, you could. And we, we were kind of feeling that vibe as well. Uh, but when you see the mockup, you can kind of see the differences between the, uh, the different colors.
Uh, let's see.
It'd be good to see those mockups, Rich.
Okay.
I, uh, I feel strongly about the recommendation, personal recommendation to, to pay the extra money and put the reflective tape on those posts, but I don't know how the rest of the board feels about that.
Chad? I, I like that idea and I think Barry had a compromise of doing that on the major, major arteries. And not every sign, but just our major, major roads.
Uh, I don't know. Uh, it's, it's when you're out in the boonies looking for someplace off the major road, it really helps to find out where the streets.
True, that's true.
But, you know, you know how we said it all comes down to the dollar, so I gotta cost it all out. Um, you know, present it and, uh, you know, make sure that we can fit it within our budget that we can get it done.
Walter, in, in five years, none of us are gonna be driving anymore, anyway. Automated, automated cars, we're just gonna get in.
I don't think I could afford to buy one. Besides, Blythe's got plenty of money to, to support that, Barry. Okay, anyway, all right, thanks. Thank you on that. Let's go back to the, uh, Del Zell for a second.
Walter, um, Donna Jones has her hand up. I don't know if she wanted to say something on this topic or not.
Okay, Donna, go ahead.
Hi, um, thank you. Um, may not be planning board related, but are we paying a penalty for not complying with the current rules?
No, we're not paying any penalty. What it comes down to is different levels of, of tort liability. Um, so basically, the impetus for this whole retro reflectivity standard across the United States was, they did a study in Florida, basically that's based on the aging population. And they did a study down there and they said people can't see the signs at night. So they came up with a design for the lettering and the retro reflectivity, uh, that they want standardized throughout the country.
Thank you.
Thanks, Barry.
Uh, Walter, Kathleen has her hand raised. I think she'd like to say something on this topic.
Kathleen, go ahead.
Hi, um, I just wanted to say, I'm Kathleen McKenna, twenty-four stop River Road. Um, I like Walter's idea also of, of the illuminated, uh, you know, with the, the signs, this tape. Just because it is, it does get very dark in a lot of those roads. I am in the boonies myself. Um, and also I just want to say green and yellow, those are KP colors.
Uh, we can't use yellow. It has to be white, unfortunately.
I know, well, green.
Okay, thank you, Kathleen. Thank you. All right, um, I think we'll close up, that should close up the discussion on, on, uh, street signs and we'll go back to, uh, to, uh, Noon Hill Estates. Rich, uh, you want to talk about, uh, the other issues there, please?
Sure, so. It doesn't appear as if I see Mr. Dazel on here.
I don't believe so.
Okay, so, um, you had some correspondence back from Mr. Dazel relative to, uh, asking him about completing the subdivision by which he emailed back, um, the spring of, uh, upcoming spring of twenty twenty-one. The road, as you know, was supposed to be, uh, completed as of December thirty-first, twenty eighteen. Um, that hasn't occurred. Um, so it's, it's past its time for completion. Um, all the homes are built there now, so the, uh, like a relative argument of, you know, much larger vehicles potentially damaging to top coat and so forth is not the case anymore. So there really is actually that, that case was kind of gone by the wayside much earlier this year. Um, so there's been really lack of action to move this thing to ahead to get the, the subdivision completed. Um, as we have corresponded with the neighbors, um, the board would officially have to hold a public hearing, um, find Mr. Dazel and default for failure to complete the roadway, um, which was this, which was, uh, described in the certificate of action. That's not necessarily a hard case to make, because we already know that, the dates are there. Um, by giving him due notice to be able to present his case of why he hasn't completed it, the board would hear it. Uh, the board can then in turn, uh, vote to, uh, call the funds. Now, we're holding seventy-eight thousand dollars, uh, went through back and, and looked at some of the older cost estimates and reflected updated numbers, um, between numbers we have from DPW as well as, um, Beta who's using prevailing wage, um, from the state. So if you apply all those numbers, we're a little bit tight relative to the amount of money we're holding. Um, the one thing I do know, uh, you know, the trees, street trees there have not been planted, um, nor the plantings within the cul-de-sac. Um, so those two dollar amounts, and I'll share my screen just to show you what those represent from a cost standpoint. So if you see in the spreadsheet that I have here, um, we have seventeen thousand dollars in street trees and five thousand dollars in shrubbery. So one thought is, you know, at least my thought from a non-professional standpoint, I think everybody's done a very nice job. Their homes are nicely landscaped. And they've kind of moved to finish things from their home standpoint. Um, so, you know, it would be good to have a discussion with, um, the residents in the subdivision, whether we need to, you know, plant out the subdivision as it was originally approved or not. And if there's a thought, perhaps we don't do that, that would free up some dollars to, uh, to, to make sure we can cover all the other expenses that would need to be taken care of from, uh, uh, completion standpoint. Um, if we go that way, the one thing I would sequence, I would like to have the planning board do would be, so one, if you decide, let's, the decision is we're gonna find him in default, schedule the public hearing. Um, what I'd like to do is to, um, have the board vote to real, reallocate the funds within the, the bond that's being held. So for example, um, if you look here, I've added a legal line item in here and, and, and the reason why I've done that is because, uh, the history of completing subdivision that, uh, developers have been default on is costing us legal fees, uh, working with town council. Um, between trying to get deeds done and, and clearances. So I like to reallocate this, this, uh, pot of money potentially, but that would obviously would have to be discussion with the neighborhood too. So I guess, one, if the board's pleasures to find him a default, we would schedule the meeting in January. Uh, simultaneously act to, to reallocate the funds within here. Um, that probably would actually happen first, to be honest with you. And then behind that would be the, the actual thought of finding him in default. And then go forward from there. Um, the one thing, uh, that we did discuss, uh, with DPW is because they are, they have quite a few projects coming up in the spring, uh, for paving projects. Is that we would, uh, potentially put this out to bid um, for someone else. We would oversee the, the construction of it, the town side with the money. But we would hire a new contractor to complete the work with the exception of paving because we have very favorable paving rates that we can get from the town standpoint. And we would just incorporate that into the paving coming forward. And we would just incorporate that into the paving coming forward for a spring of, well, twenty-one, twenty twenty-one year as a way to, again, try to help maximize, uh, the dollars that we have to, to finish this.
Uh, one question that, that comes up, you say we, what, what's the number you say we have in a bond right now?
We have, uh, seventy-eight thousand dollars and some change.
Seventy-eight and change, okay. And the DPW, uh, cost to complete is the eighty-two thousand you just showed us, right?
Yeah, that's my rough. There's a few things that aren't in there, so the, the, the number might fluctuate enough, but, um.
We, we do have a, a twenty-five percent contingency within that number.
Yeah, we do, we do. I just don't know, like, I mean, it's hard to, I'd like to have a little more wiggle room per se, but, um, and though maybe giving us some breathing room would be the idea of the planting, so.
Yeah, right, right. Oh, I, I understand. Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I think then we need to consider following your recommendation and, and, uh, voting to, uh, or proposing to vote to, uh, find the man in default and have a public hearing at the January, uh, planning board meeting. Um, how about, uh, some discussion from board members about that proposal? Chad, what do you think?
I, I, I support that.
Aaron?
I'm in support.
Gary?
I would also support.
Okay, so, uh, we need a, a, a motion to that effect, uh, to, to hold, uh, Mr. Del Zell in default for the completion of Noon Hill Estates. Do we have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Uh, we'll have a roll call vote. Uh, Mr. Hunt?
Hi.
Mr. Peck?
Aye.
Mr. Searle?
Aye.
Your votes, aye. Okay, so you can get that proceeding, uh. In the meantime, if you wanna chat with the residents about the trees that makes sense, um, and if you wanna propose a reallocation of the eighty-two thousand, that makes sense too. We'd take a look at that and discuss it at our January meeting.
So probably, I'll set up a separate Zoom meeting with the neighbors and we can kind of talk through the
Right.
The plantings.
All right, now let's, uh, let's assume that we have a public hearing in January. Uh, and because, uh, of the action that we're both proposing to take at that time, Mr. Dalzell shows up and makes a case to say, oh, please don't do that. I will finish it in the spring. What's your position on that, Rich?
Well, I mean, he hasn't, he hasn't really performed, so I mean, you know. I'm not sure I really would wait any longer. I mean, we, we've kind of been down these roads before. Now I'm gonna perform and then they don't perform. And now all of a sudden, we're, you know, we just went, you know, thank goodness, we finally got Frederickson completed, but, you know. We're at, up again at the end of the year last, this past year to get it done, so it's kind of.
Yeah, I, I, I support that frankly. Uh, we've been chasing too many of these developers who, who aren't doing what they promised they would do when we approved their original plans. But, uh.
Quite frankly, from administration standpoint, if, as long as we have enough money in some respects, I know Barry doesn't want to hear it, but. You know, the time spent chasing and trying to get them to do this stuff is, uh, well, it's, it's, there's a lot of wasted time, honestly.
It's valuable time, I know.
Right. Yeah, I, I, I support that. I mean, Rich and I do a lot of chasing, um, especially these developers, punch lists. Um, you know, one of the, one of the good ideas Rich had too is, is, you know, we can combine a couple of these outliers into one project and bid it out. Um, you know, we have Old Mill Extension, you know, put up three, three or four of these together, just get them off our plate and get them accepted. We don't have to worry about them.
Yep, yep, agreed. Okay, so that's the action we're gonna take, uh, at the January meeting.
Okay.
Um. Any further discussion on Noon Hill Estates?
I have a quick question. Hi, everyone. This is from Redwood Circle. Um, Mr. McCarthy, why are we giving a Mr. Denzel another chance? Back in October, we asked him to show up this evening and he hasn't shown up and we're giving him another chance.
Yeah, so, um, procedurally, but, you know, according to the laws of Massachusetts, we actually have to formally hold a hearing and have, and find him in default. So before everything up to this point, we were trying to get him to cooperatively finish and get forward, not have to take this next step. He didn't do it, unfortunately. So now we have to take the formal step, which is to call a hearing and, and officially find him in default. So he can't, so we can actually obtain the funds to, uh, to complete it.
So in essence, so in essence, we are not, uh, getting, letting him have another chance. We're calling his bluff.
Yeah.
And from a timing standpoint, a lot of these things can't happen until next summer anyway, so we're procedurally getting these things done in the winter, right?
Right.
Right, so I have then a, a follow-up, really quick follow-up. Actually, a question, a comment. How many finished streets have no signs in our ti- town right now? They have no signs.
Only, only yours, because then all the other developers put them in.
Thank you. And, um, when is the date in January for him to show up?
January twelfth.
It really doesn't matter whether he shows up or not. It's the action we're gonna take to, 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 to place him in default and finish the project ourselves.
Understood. And what's the next step after that? Because he most likely won't show up.
Well, and by the way, that date would be, uh, January, uh, twelfth, I believe. Is that right, Betsy?
Yeah, January twelfth.
So, but after, uh, on January thirteenth, what is our plan?
Well, we're gonna be, um, you know, we'll have to, so we'll write up the decision, we'll notify, uh, Mr. Dalzell. We'll notify the town clerk. I'll notify, we'll notify the treasurer. So the money, in this particular case, the money is in a bank account, so it's not a performance bond or a tri-party lenders agreement. So it's just a matter of, of giving, you know, we would the decision of the planning board be a written document that we would forward to the town clerk. So that way, it's on notice there. The letter would go to, uh, Emery Dugan is the treasurer that we're gonna use that money. And then it's a matter of, um, then we'll have to go put the thing out to bid, which we'll do after January, so that way we're lined up for the, the spring construction.
And when would that begin? When would this construction begin for the record?
We, we can't say that, because we'd have to, we have to bid the job, we have to award the job, we'll have to fit the paving into the DPW schedule. Um, so we, we can't give you a definite date at this time.
So can you give me six months? Is it May first approximately?
Yeah, so I, I wouldn't, listen, I would, I think to be, you're not gonna, we wouldn't see any before the beginning of April, probably May is probably a fair target. That's what we would, because we would have, we would put that in, in the bid as well, so.
But the street sign is going to be, uh, set up before then. Is that my understanding?
A, as soon as the town can agree to what color and what type of street sign they wanna put in, we will put it in.
But we're not in the same position like the rest of our, our neighbors, because everybody else has their sign, right? So if I call nine-one-one, I'm not quite sure if they're going to find me.
Well, they know where you are, because, they are, because the nine-one-one mapping is different than the street signs. Um, so they have that mapped at a different area. Uh, they will find you.
It sounds like the street sign will be in before the end of January, though.
Yeah, just, we just gotta get the consensus of select boards, everybody, and then, uh, they pick the color, we'll put it in.
So, re- thank you. And then final comment, um, Mr. McCarthy, can you send us an email of that spreadsheet that you've just shared with everyone, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Yep. So I'll, uh, so I will send the spreadsheet, but then I'll also be emailing to try to set up, uh, you know, uh, another, uh, meeting just with you all as neighbors to discuss the trees, just.
We really appreciate your hard work and, and detail-oriented, um, focus here. Thanks.
Yep, you're welcome.
All right, uh, that concludes our discussion on, uh, Noon Hill Estate, Noon Hill Acres. All right, uh, next item is, uh, potential zoning amendments for the spring of twenty twenty-one town meeting. Mr. McCarthy.
So this will be pretty quick. Um, so we did talk about B one. Um, there is, uh, I think it appears there'll be a need for us to bring a amendment to the floodplain bylaw to, uh, meet the requirements of FEMA. So that would be, uh, we just, we have a draft, we've just gotta go through it with staff, so I would present that to the board. Um, we have already, I've already given our bylaw to Department of Conservation Recreation who handles the FEMA floodplain issues. And she's provided me a really essentially a, an edited version of our bylaw in order to meet the FEMA's requirements. So I will, uh, we just wanna review it internally, but we'll have it for the next meeting in January for the board to, uh, review and hopefully, um, accept. And then one other zoning art, uh, zoning issue, um, which is not related to B one, which is, I could just show you real quick. Um, and this is relative to accessory structure setbacks. Sorry.
Oh, great. Lock, maybe.
Oh, what the heck? Let's see. Well, I can talk to you when I'm doing it, yes, but. So right here. So essentially, what, what you see is to clarify that, uh, accessory buildings, which also include pools, cannot be placed within the required front yard setback. So it's, it's come up on a, a few different occasions where, uh, you've got essentially the space between the, the required front yard and then up to the house, which gets to the side. So we wanna be clear, uh, clearer, I guess, let's say, where you can put that structure and where you can't.
Do you have an example?
Do you have draft, do you have draft language for that?
Yeah, you're looking at it right here, which is just.
So the, this is the draft or, or, or is this is the existing?
That's the draft.
That's the draft.
So what you see here is, is pretty simple, actually. You strike out A, you put in the required, and then you add in front yard setback. So for example, um, we, we had.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
So what we, the situation has come up is we had a, uh, a barn next to a home where the question was, did it need, it was, you know, it's a long linear lot running on, uh, Needham Street. And the question was, you know, the front yard, we didn't distinguish between required and front yard. So the way we define yard, it could be, you know, essentially you couldn't even put it, anything that's in the front. Um, I can get, and I'll, I can show you. What I'll do is I'll, I'll give you a plan of that. So visually, you can see it at the next meeting.
That'd be helpful.
Yeah. Um, and there's been a couple of other ones too as well. So for example, um, somebody on Cleveland Street right now is putting, uh, a three-car garage in front. It, it's kind of in the front to the side of their house. Um, so, but it's a hundred and twenty feet back off of Cleveland Street. So we wanna make sure that, at least I think, hopefully, um, that, yeah, you can't put it in the required front yard, but if it's in the front, but to the side, you still can put the, the garage.
And, and what determines front? It's just the street that determines front, not the house orientation?
Yeah, correct. It's the street. So it's that, from sideline to sideline and then fifty feet back, that box, that rectangular box would be the, the front yard setback. And I have, uh, so actually, if you look, this is in, uh, in the zoning bylaw exhibit, example A. So if you can see, um.
Yep.
Required setbacks in here.
Yep.
So think about, uh, you know, that's where.
What, what's the downside of keeping the language the way it is, Rich? I mean, if someone, I mean, someone could file for variance if they wanted to put a barn in their front yard.
Yeah, they can file for variance, although, you know, a variance, well, actually.
I mean, the point, the point of the language is, is to keep accessory buildings from being between the street and the front of the house, right?
It is, yeah.
I think that's a, I think that's a pretty reasonable requirement for our town.
It is. I can give you, uh, what I would do is, uh, I'll bring in a couple, you know, you, you may decide not to change it. So I, it's been, you know, brought forward to me by the billing department to give consideration to make the change. I'll get some examples from them. We'll share them at the next meeting. You can kind of decide whether you.
Okay.
That would be helpful.
Yeah, that would be helpful. Thank you, Rich.
And that, other than that, that's, uh, I should be, we should be back in early January, mid-January, report on the sewer study under the housing tools.
Yep, okay.
That's it that I have for tonight.
All right, uh, we still do not have any respondents to our request for associate planning member. Correct, Betsy?
Correct.
Hey, hey, Walter, I think we skipped over the master deeds for Twenty-Nine Valley, or is that continuing? We continue in that to the next meeting?
That's an earlier version of the, uh, of the agenda, which, uh, did not get published. And so we, that item is not on our agenda for this evening.
Skip it over it.
So, uh, I think the next item is to, uh, approve some minutes.
I would make a motion to approve the planning board minutes as amended from the November tenth meeting and uh, is it a second motion or the same motion for the executive?
I think they're separate.
Okay. So first motion is to approve the planning board minutes as amended from November tenth meeting.
Okay.
All right, all in favor, Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Peck?
Aye.
Mr. Searle?
Aye.
Your votes, aye. Okay.
I would make another motion to, uh, approve the executive session minutes as amended from the November tenth meeting.
Wait a second.
Or second it, sorry.
Okay. Uh, all right, uh, Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Peck?
Aye.
Mr. Searle?
Aye.
Your votes, aye. All right, town planner updates. Anything you wanna say here that you might not have already said, Rich?
No, but I do see a hand up from a resident.
Say again?
I do see a hand up from a resident.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Yes, I apologize. I was trying to, um, get additional information about the associate planner position.
Oh, okay.
Ah, okay.
Is there, uh, somewhere I could find additional information, or are you just looking for volunteers?
Sure, uh, well, uh, the, the, uh.
Who is volunteer?
You can volunteer, yes. Uh, we, it would be a joint appointment between the, uh, planning board and the selectman, select board, excuse me. Um, and, uh, I, I, what's the term? One year, Betsy typically?
One year.
One year. Uh, and of course, uh, you're always eligible to run for any open planning board seat, should that, uh, turn up in the future. And, uh, you, you are a non-voting representative, except in which case, Rich?
So on, on special permits, if one of the board members has to recuse themselves, or if they, um, for some reason missed a couple of hearings, then as the associate member, you will be able to vote on that special permit. So you would, you know, follow along in the project as an associate member, and there could be, uh, as things go forward, a situation where, um, maybe um, a member misses two meetings, or there might be a case where there's a potential conflict of interest, um, where a board member would recuse themselves, and then you would sit as a, as a planning board member for the special permit. So for example, um, an open space subdivision, actually, uh, no, you're in Frederickson. Well, so, uh, Alexander Estates was a special permit. That's a special permit that the planning board, um, you potentially could sit on. Um, and there is, uh, uses that are special permits. So it's a, you, it's a nice, uh, I think it's a great position to get your feet wet, to learn about planning and, uh, maybe. Maybe. Step in a. Get involved with the town.
Sure, and and we would welcome uh, your, your uh, interest, so if you have an interest uh. After this little bit of information, uh, please send your your. CV, if you will, to uh, to Rich or Betsy and uh. Then, then uh, please prepare to. To show up at our January meeting on the twelfth, and we would uh, welcome you and. Chat a little bit with you and uh. See where it goes from there.
Yeah, and then we would.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, and then we would then send it, if you're interested in the planning board vote, send it over to the select board. For them, so you interview twice, so to speak, get to introduce yourself.
Okay, makes sense, and uh, Rich, your email address is on the town website?
It is, yep.
Awesome, all right, thank you.
Yep.
You're welcome. All right, um.
That's it for me.
That's it for you, okay. I think we've covered the agenda. Do we have any other business this evening?
Uh, just uh, had sent you all the um, for the select board code of conduct policy.
Yes.
I don't know if you got, I'll have a chance to read that.
No, I haven't, it's it's over fifty pages long.
On my bed stand, it's.
Yeah, um. So uh, I I would propose that uh, between now and the January meeting, we find time to read those fifty pages and uh. Be prepared to discuss it at our January meeting.
I agree with Walter, it's quite lengthy.
I got, I could take out a mortgage to buy the paper to print it.
Oh, by the way, you're not allowed to say that anymore, Walter.
Uh, I. After he reads the code of conduct.
I have one question, um. You know. Given uh, all the conversations we have about bonds and pulling bonds and developers not finishing their work and. Uh, often find ourselves in difficult positions where the bond. Doesn't necessarily cover the work that's left. Actually, I don't know if often is the right word, um. Maybe fifty, maybe fifty percent of the time. I mean. I I don't really understand how the bonds get set and whatnot at the beginning of projects to, to we, is that. Of responsibility of our board and is that a a practice we should revisit and? Uh, because. It it's, you know, we deal with it on such a common basis and we seem to be. Not in a great position to be proactive.
Well, we also find ourselves with, in some cases, with no bond.
Yeah.
Because.
I, my my two cents and and all all lesson learned, and there's probably many. Is that I I see the time value of money with the current uh, potential litigation that occurred. You play, you you have a bond that was uh, put in place a decade ago, and then the development takes so long that the cost of doing things. Uh, let alone the legal expenses, they potentially could be in a contingency, but that just the time value of money. Uh, makes the original estimate of the bond inadequate ten years later. So I I, to address that, I think there needs to be some level of contingency. When the bond is put together, and if things are executed to a proper timeframe, it might be. One consideration to release more money, but it seems like at some point where. You, where you should be dealing with the developer's money all the time, you should always have an advantage. We are always at a disadvantage a very short time into the development.
So uh, what what's the right process to change this? Does anybody know?
Well, I I think is even more fundamental question, what is the current process?
Yes, right.
Right. So. That's a great segue for what. We want to start at the January meeting to talk about, so one of the things is, that's part of this. Um. The process, what presently exists. And where we need to kind of move things. Um, to. So we're not in this position. Um, going forward. And then um, we also want to touch on. See how the agenda is, but there are, so the DPW, I know the planning board, but with my previous colleague that was here, Ray Goff. Had worked on a bunch of provisions which the board wanted to change. So we wanted to try to move that as as a planning board task to. Um, look at the bonding process, the street acceptance process. Some of the other technical requirements to update the subdivision regulations. Um, two reasons, obviously. It it's important to do that, some of the things have changed. But also going forward, if it's not the planning board. Who um, you know, has a development before, it's the basis for which forty Bs. Are being used um, for development, so it's really important either way. So we need to. That's on the. On the to-do list with the board.
So we. All right, so so are you saying that you will have enough information to make a meaningful discussion in January?
Yeah, we will on the, on the, on the bond stuff, yes.
Okay, all right, that's good.
So is it, is it also something that, you know, Gary brings up, uh, well, both Gary and Aaron bring up good points, but. It comes down to, we've got, you know, some developers that take forever to finish a project. Um. And. The bond was set, you know, a decade ago, and it's not, and that bond value is not appropriate anymore. So is there a mechanism in place where these bonds are evaluated on a. You know, maybe every couple of years or something to see if they're still appropriate?
Yeah, so there's, there's definitely, that's a piece of it, and DPW is going to join the conversation, because one of the things we had talked about with them. There are some subdivisions that, you know, there might be a lot or two lot that. Just haven't been able to move forward, to be developed. But the practice in the past is not to finish it until everything is done. Well. You know, there's an economic piece to that, and we need to. So the thought, at least with DPW now, is there might be a situation where, no, finish the road. We'll get it accepted. But we'll have a a curb cut and a property bond at each development site going forward. So we're not sitting on these roads. To have them completed when, you know, the buildout. Gets prolonged for a lot of different reasons. So there's, there's a few different ways we want to try to tackle it. That's the, you know, the. We want, so that's the idea, to talk about that in January, so.
Good to hear you're on top of it, Rich.
Sounds good.
All right.
All right, uh, any further? Discussion on any points tonight? Hearing now, the board will uh, rather, the chair will accept. A motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconds?
Second.
Mr. Hunt?
Hi.
Mr. Peck?
Hi.
Mr. Searle?
I.
Your votes, I, thank you all, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you, Betsy.